We call the word of town council work session for Tuesday, August eighth, twenty twenty three. It is three P M. And today we begin with a Floyd Hill I seventy project update. Take it away.
Well, thank you, and thank you for having us here today to talk about the Floyd Hill project, which is a much needed improvement on the I seventy mountain corridor. With me today, I have our construction manager, Jeff.
How's it going?
And Stacia, who's our strategic communications lead. And I'm Kurt Kianka, the Floyd Hill Project Director. And we're going to present to you today, we're going to talk about the need for the project, the project elements. I have some before existing conditions and then some renderings of what Floyd Hill is going to look like in the future. And then Jeff is going to talk about how we are going to keep I seventy moving during construction. And what to expect during construction. And then Stacia is going to go over a lot of our communication efforts on the project. So with that, uh, the Floyd Hill project, uh, the limits of Floyd Hill are on the western end is the first exit of Idaho Springs, which is exit two forty one. To the eastern end with, which is the top of Floyd Hill, which is exit two forty eight, which is a Beaver Brook exit. The Floyd Hill project is being delivered in phases. This is due to the CMGC process that we're using to deliver the product. So we're able to get some packages out. That are easier to design, get out in construction, and then while we're still designing subsequent packages. So we've broken the Floyd Hill project into three primary packages. The first one is the east section. That's everything from exit two forty eight, which is the top of Floyd Hill, carrying west. To the US six exit near the bottom of Floyd Hill. That is currently under construction right now. And it will carry on through the spring of twenty twenty six. The next section that will go to construction is our west section. That's everything from the Hidden Valley Central City interchange, which is exit two forty three. Carrying west to exit two forty one, which is that first Idaho Springs exit. That's slated to go to construction in the fall of this year and will carry on to the fall of twenty twenty seven. Then the last package to go will be our central section, which is everything in between bottom of Floyd Hill US six. Carrying to the west, uh, exit two forty three, Hidden Valley Central City interchange. And that is slated to go to construction the fall of next year, twenty twenty four, and will go through the end of twenty twenty eight. So we have about five years of construction. To complete the project, um, starting now through twenty twenty eight. So the need for the project, anybody who has driven that corridor on a heavy ski day, a weekend, a holiday. You know that there is a bottleneck in the westbound direction. So as you head from Denver and you go up Floyd Hill and you get. Start going down Floyd Hill, you go from three lanes and then you drop down to two lanes as you go down Floyd Hill. Weave your way to the Veterans Memorial Tunnels, where the recently created Mountain Express Lane provides a, uh, third lane for those peak travel times. To go through there. So what we're seeing is this bottleneck that we have through there. So. The Floyd Hill project will address that by adding a third lane from the top of Floyd Hill. Connecting into the Mountain Express Lane at the Veterans Memorial Tunnel. That third lane will be an express lane. And it will be operated twenty four seven, not to be confused with the Mountain Express Lane that is only open during peak travel times. Um, and is a shoulder lane that, uh, is not to standard shoulders. And, and so we're bringing everything up to standard on Floyd Hill. We're addressing those safety concerns. When you go through this section of I seventy, there's winding curves, there's sharp curves. The curve at the bottom of Floyd Hill is currently rated at forty five miles an hour. People don't drive forty five miles an hour through there. So we're bringing everything up to a fifty five mile an hour. Uh, design speed and we're getting, uh, current site distance. Which site distance, if you come around a corner, something is in the road that gives you time to see it, react and stop. And so we're addressing that as part of the Floyd Hill project. We're rebuilding those bridges at the bottom of Floyd Hill that are falling apart. They need constant maintenance. Um, so those will be removed and replaced. We are also adding a resilient component to this section of I seventy. So if you come to Floyd Hill and you head down Floyd Hill. There is a frontage road, which is US forty that parallels I seventy. When you get to the bottom of Floyd Hill, you're forced onto I seventy. On a left hand merge. And then once you get to Central City Parkway interchange, then County Road three fourteen is another parallel road that, that, uh. Goes along I seventy. So we are going to connect the two. We are adding a new frontage road connection. From the bottom of Floyd Hill, connecting that into County Road three fourteen at Central City Hidden Valley. We are also adding a new connection at the bottom of Floyd Hill in the eastbound direction. So coming from US six at the bottom of Floyd Hill in the eastbound I seventy direction, there will be a new ramp. Onto I seventy and it will carry up Floyd Hill and then the lane will drop once you get past the Homestead interchange. Uh, we are also adding improvements to the Clear Creek Greenway Trail. So there is a trail that parallels. Uh, Clear Creek just south of I seventy. We're going to reconstruct that ten foot wide in concrete. We're also looking to do other improvements. Once we get I seventy up out of the, uh, uh, out of the current alignment, that opens up areas where we can improve stream conditions. Riparian habitats and other, uh, water quality components of the project. And, uh, along with that, we currently have two air quality monitors that are installed in operational on the project. You can visit our website. You can type in Google Floyd Hill project. You can click the air quality tab and you can look at the air quality in. Uh, for the current day in, you know, live readings. Uh, next slide, please. So.
Can I go up?
Nope, go down.
Hey, so the air quality read will just be by those, those, uh. Air quality sensors, right? So won't be like further east into, into Denver proper.
There are other ones in Denver, and I know even with C dot projects, I know there's stuff from the two seventy project as well, but. We've only installed two, one in Idaho Springs and then one at the top of Floyd Hill. So now we're going to look at some renderings of what I seventy looks like today. And then look at, or look at current conditions and then look at some renderings of what it's going to look like in the future. So to orange, orient you, you are standing midway down Floyd Hill, looking to the east. For reference, I always use at the bottom of Floyd Hill, there's a bar restaurant called Two Bears formerly known as Kermit's. And so that is behind us and we are looking up Floyd Hill to the east. As you can see, we have two lanes in the westbound direction coming down. And then we have those three lanes going up Floyd Hill to the east. And so if we go to the next slide. There you go. Um, this is what it's going to look like in the future. So you see in the westbound direction, we maintain those two general purpose lanes. We have that four foot buffer in between the general purpose lanes in the express lane. We have standard shoulders. And then you see the US six off ramp, uh, on the left hand side there. And then in the eastbound direction, you can see the three general purpose lanes that exist today. And then that fourth lane is that on ramp, that extended on ramp. That I was talking about from the bottom of Floyd Hill, carrying all the way up Floyd Hill so that the big trucks can get up to speed before merging into traffic. So now we're going to spend a hundred and eighty degrees and look towards the bottom of Floyd Hill. And so we're at the same spot midway down Floyd Hill, only we're looking to the west. So Two Bears Kermit's Restaurant is down over the hill, straight into the screen. Um, you have westbound I seventy, which is the two lanes on the right. Eastbound I seventy three lanes on the left. And then if we go to the next slide.
This mouse is touchy.
Craig is clicking once.
No clicking is not doing it.
Hey, during the audience could help you.
I need one. There we go.
All right. So this is same location looking to the west and this is the future of I seventy. And so. This is where things really start to change. And this is where our seven thousand foot long viaduct takes off. Uh, most of the way down Floyd Hill. And we talk about that forty five mile an hour curve at the bottom of Floyd Hill. This is that fifty five mile an hour sweeping curve as you go down around the hill. Um, you can see the added express lane there and then also the fourth lane coming up Floyd Hill on the left hand side. So now we're going to move to the bottom of Floyd Hill. This is what it looks like today. See those two bridges that have, uh, reached the end of their useful life that will be replaced as part of the project. You can see that, uh, US six on ramp going to westbound I seventy in the US six off ramp there. Um, you can also see that goes underneath of I seventy there. That's the Greenway Trail. We are looking to the west here at the bottom of Floyd Hill. Uh, once you go around those corners, you get to the Central City Hidden Valley interchange. So that's what it looks like today. If you go to the next slide. This is what it will look like in the future. And so lots of things going on here. You can see. Westbound I seventy is on the big seven thousand foot long structure that you see there. Eastbound I seventy is below it. You can see they cross over each other. We call that the braid. And the reason for that is constructability. You know, when you're out in the plains, you typically widen the road, you go off to the side, move traffic over. Work here. We don't have that luxury here. We have a rock canyon wall. On the right hand side of the screen there, and then we have Clear Creek on the left. So we're going up. And so that's part of the need for the braid. Um, we've worked through this with a lot of our stakeholders and made some. Modifications from what was originally in our environmental assessment. And there, there were lots of benefits to doing this here. I think it's more aesthetically pleasing. We don't have I seventy at the same level. We've separated them. Elevation wise, um, and, uh.
It's crazy.
Yeah, it is. Yes. Um, so yeah, you, you can see the braid there. You have westbound over on the left now and eastbound on the right. As we go through there and you can kind of see that frontage road connection that goes in between the two there on the right side of the screen. You can also see, oh, yeah, go back one. Uh, that new connection from the bottom of Floyd Hill, those ramps over Clear Creek. That's the US six off ramp in that new connection with US six on ramp. So now we're going to move a little bit farther to the west. So we're moving towards the Central City Hidden Valley interchange, which is up around the corner. This is an area that we call Sawmill Gulch. Um, talked about those safety concerns of those sharp curves in the site distance. So we're really flattening those out. So that's what it looks like here today. If we go to the next rendering.
It went the wrong way. One more. Is it? There it is.
So there's the future rendering of I seventy. Um, keep in mind, we're still braided here. So westbound is actually on the left hand side of the screen. Eastbound's on the right. You can see that new frontage road connection that follows the current I seventy alignment. It is there today. You can see that Greenway Trail on the south side of Clear Creek on the left hand side of the screen. Um, and, uh. You can see just on the other side of Sawmill Gulch there. That's where the roads will braid back to their original alignment. This is what we call the west section of the project. And so now I have my back against the Veterans Memorial Tunnels and I am looking to the east. So now if you go around that corner, you go back to the Hidden Valley Central City interchange. You can see County Road three fourteen on the right hand side of the screen, the other side of Clear Creek. This is what it looks like today. Again, another one of those corners that we're addressing the safety issues and flattening out. For reference, if you look at that, uh, transmission tower at the top of the screen, um, that'll show up on the next rendering. We're removing a lot of rock here to flatten out these curves. So if you go to the next slide. That's the future of I seventy through here.
Mate, tons of rock is that?
I believe it's about three hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred thousand cubic yards.
Appreciate it. I was gonna say, how much, oh, well, how much is that weigh?
Hello.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and he's going to talk about our efforts to keep I seventy moving and also our construction.
Thanks. Thanks. So clearly this is what it looks like, uh, most Fridays, Saturday, Sunday mornings. Um, I think we've all been stuck here. So goals of the project, obviously, you know, we have to break a few eggs to bake this cake. Right? So we got to get out there. We got to move traffic around. We're going to be doing work. But goal number one is to keep traffic moving, keep folks as much out of this as possible. Um, keeping all the lanes open and ramps open during the peak traffic hours. So we know when we, we've studied our traffic. We know when people. Are moving through here. We're going to keep lanes open at those times. Keep our ramps open. Keep folks getting through the project. Um, ensuring lane closures are responsive to current traffic patterns. We've been in, we've been doing rock scaling the last couple, uh, well, the last week really. And we've had holds in the middle of the day. So the example of that is we've noticed traffic patterns changing just a little bit. So we made adjustments to how we conduct those closures. So that it's more efficient and we're not holding one side of traffic longer than we're holding another one. So little things like that where we're paying attention day to day, watching what's happening to try to keep people moving through there as quickly as we can. Um, innovating complex work above the roadway. So you know what we're talking about there is a lot of the bridge work and stuff. We're going to be able to do that with live traffic. Some of the methods that we're bringing in, we're moving things off to the side of the roadway. Picking them up, setting them in place, keeping traffic moving. We will have nighttime closures. We were talking about that a little bit before the meeting started. You know, anything that's worked directly over traffic, those are the things we'll move tonight and stay out of this type of situation where. We're impacting folks in that daytime travel. Um, the nude roadway sections being built adjacent to the current lanes. So Kurt was showing that in those models of. You can see where existing traffic is and you can see how we're pulling the lanes off of that existing footprint. It makes that construction a whole lot easier for us. Um, coordinating with area projects and first responders. So this is a big one, especially for you guys and kind of the, the outer reaching areas from where the project limits are. Those first responders, we know there's folks coming from up here that need to get to Denver. So anytime we're doing closures, we're in communication with all the first responders. We work with the Traffic Operations Center in Golden through C dot, and we've got radios to Clear Creek EMS and Summit County. That we can communicate quickly with to make sure if they're sending somebody through, we're getting the traffic out of the way and making it possible. Um, our contractors even committed, you know, as we get into the C section and we start opening up some of these work areas. That if traffic is just so ground down, if there's some kind of incident right in the middle of the project limits. We can still get emergency vehicles through, through our construction access. So they're going to keep things graded and passable so that those kinds of vehicles can get through as well. Um, coordination with the area projects. So you know, that, that's a really tight corridor through there with where the US six canyon comes up. All of the projects that C dot has from really golden clear onto this side and getting further along. I'm working with Stacia and then our region three P I partners, we're tracking all that and making sure that. We're not sending each other into closures on top of one another. So if you get to one place and that road's closed and then they make you turn around and come back to another closure, we don't need that frustration. So part of my job is making sure that we've coordinated with all those other projects. And we're giving priority to the projects that need those closures and pushing off work on others just to make sure there's access to these different areas. Um, the emergency pull offs, we've engineered those, we found spots within each east, excuse me, each section. So that there is a spot for vehicles that are having problems, whether. Flat tire, engine trouble, whatever, we can get you off of that roadway and get you out of the way and then get emergency vehicles to come help you out. Um, and then the last thing there promoting the use of transit and carpool options. You know, obviously C dot has really geared up in that sense with bus staying, snow staying, Pegasus. And some of our programs, there's also some other rideshare opportunities out there that the I seventy coalition, um, helps fund and talk about. So. You know, we're helping to promote that as well through our P I machine to say, hey. Instead of having, you know, all these people sitting in here, we know the numbers that a lot of those folks are sitting in those cars by themselves. Start getting them together and, and getting some of those single occupancy vehicles off the roadway. So next slide, please. Um, starting now, we've been in construction for about a month. I, I've talked about the overnight lane closures already. That's when we'll do our single and double lane stuff on the highway. You know, and most of what we were doing there was just fixing some of the existing asphalt. Making sure it'll withstand the next couple of years of traffic being on it before we can get a good final lift down. Um, narrow lane and shoulder widths. So we are taking the lanes from twelve feet to eleven. Um, we're tightening up those shoulder widths just to create our work zone and give us some space to work. Um, in that area, we're going to do, reduce the speed limit down to forty five mile an hour. That's for our safety and for your safety traveling through there. So the curves and the way everything is laid out to ship traffic around, that's how we designed it is at that forty five mile an hour design speed. Um, and then the, the other big one, once we get traffic moved and we really get into our process. There's going to be a lot of trucks entering and exiting the work zones. So we're going to have those I areas clearly identified saying this is construction access. Don't follow us in there. You know, we'll have our flashing lights on. Everybody else stay on the roadway. And then be conscious that when trucks come out, they're going to be getting into those right lanes. Keeping moving up the hill and, and keeping folks out of the way. Um, next work going on that we have, we've been doing the rock scaling that I've talked about. We have some rock blasting operations coming up. So. The scaling is preparation for rock blasting and the work that we do underneath bigger rock formations. Our crews have to go up and just make sure any loose rock and debris gets knocked down safely, rather than while we have folks working underneath it. Um, these areas that we get into for the rock blasting. So. As you were looking at some of those models and you see that our roadway kind of extends into the hillside. Instead of building it out over into space in some of those areas. We got to blast some of that rock just to make it something we can excavate and then start building our infrastructure. So a few of these areas in the east section, um, as we get into west and central, we showed you the big rock cut there. A lot of that will require blasting. So we'll bring that top down is kind of what the plan is right now. Um, but. Again, those are traffic holds. We'll communicate those and how they work. Um, I can go ahead and go to the next slide and we'll get into a little bit more of that. So the rock scaling operations, um, you can see. That's pretty much what it looks like. We have guys on ro, on ropes on these slopes. And they're just looking for, you know, rocks that they can move pry bar. We use airbags a little bit depending on what they find. But these guys are trained to look at those slopes and say, okay, this is going to come down. Let's just help it now. Let's get it out of the way. And that way, when we do do a blast or we start wall construction, drilling soil nails and stuff. Into that rock and it starts to vibrate, things like the one next to the guy there on the bottom, don't come down on top of us. So to do that, we do twenty minute traffic holds in both directions. Bring traffic to a stop and those guys go to work and just start knocking stuff off the hillside. When we're clear, we make sure none of that stuff got on the roadway, send the traffic again and get those cues moving. Um, it could take up to about forty five minutes to clear the traffic out in both directions. Over the last week, we're averaging about twenty to twenty five minutes. As we get later in the day, our eastbound traffic really picks up. So about now, and I, I haven't seen the text yet. I haven't felt my pocket.
I got it ten minutes ago or so.
Okay, see, so we're finished for the day. We released that traffic there. I, I'm seeing a few more phones. Everybody's getting it good. Um, that's, that's letting everybody know we're done. We're not going to have any more impacts. Okay. So we make those adjustments, um, operations on scaling. It's, we're doing Mondays through Thursdays. Um, we're getting in four or five, maybe six of those holds depending on how soon weather moves in and kind of what that traffic looks like. But again, we're doing this probably neck into next week and then we're going to be done with scaling on the east section. The blasting then becomes more scheduled and something that's easier to communicate to everybody. Um, so getting into that blasting, uh, we've got twenty to thirty blasts that we need to do just for the east section. Um, we're hoping we, we tell everybody on here, we're looking to, those might creep into twenty twenty four. What we're looking at schedule wise and what we're seeing as we get onto those rocks. We might be able to cut that back a little bit and get into that October, November timeframe and wrap up our blasting in east section. Going to be conducted the same way. We'll hold traffic in both directions. Do our countdown, hit the blast, make sure our roadway is clear and then release traffic. Um, little bit more to it. There's some safety protocols and things we have to follow, but. We've already been meeting with our blaster to ensure that twenty minute window is what we need. Again, that will continue on for the next couple of months. Those instead of being all day, every day from nine to three. They'll be scheduled probably one to two blasts a week. So the same text message that y'all are getting. Will tell you that we plan on blasting at ten AM on Tuesday. Be prepared to, to stop around that timeframe. Um, that's just the east section. We're obviously going to have a whole lot more as we get into west and central. So same thing, those are going to be communicated similarly, lot, lot of outreach as we develop those, but. The text message seems to be the way that everybody gets it. So. Um, and with that communication, I'll turn it over to Stacia and she can talk about how we handle all that.
Great. Thank you. Um, so of course rock blasting and rock scaling are some of our most impactful construction activities. So we want to make sure we are broadcasting that message as far and wide as possible. We've been meeting with the residents in the blasting area. Uh, we've conducted pre surveys of their homes and then the contractor will do post surveys as well. So if there's any property damage. The contractor is responsible for repairing that. Uh, we feel pretty confident that won't happen, but we want to make sure we're taking accurate precautions. we're taking accurate precautions. We've also been hosting in-person meetings with residents. We've had community office hours as a way to open up that two-way communication with residents and so that they can get to know the project team a little bit more and we can dispel some rumors or concerns that might be associated with rock blasting activities. We also have a text alert system that is specific to residents. So they will get a text message anytime we're going to be doing rock blasting activities so they can bring their pets indoors as sometimes the noise can dogs that might be outside. And then for general motorists, we do have FAQ fact sheets on our website. So you can go at any time and see what's we're doing exactly for our rock scaling and blasting activities. We do have an E blast that goes out every Friday. So you can be in the know on our rock scaling and rock blasting activities for the following week. Timeframes are relatively the same, but it's a nice reminder. As Jeff said, we do have our text alerts that also go out to our general subscribers. So you're able to get information about the rock scaling and rock blasting activities for that day. If we are to experience weather, we might cancel those operations and we'll send out a text to let folks know to not expect rock blasting activities for that day. We're really trying our best not to spam folks. So we're not going to be sending out a text message every single time we do a traffic holds for scaling or blasting operations, but we're trying to fine tune our text message outreach a little bit more. Just so folks are a bit more prepared. Right now we're giving timeframes, which is helpful, but I know we've heard from some folks that they'd rather know right the exact times that we're doing these blasting activities. So we're working through a strategy right now. And of course, cotrip.org will always be the best place to go for real time information on traffic. Then we'll be utilizing our social media pages. We have the C dot Facebook, Twitter and Instagram accounts where we'll be posting information about our rock blasting communications. And then if you're driving along I seventy and you missed all of these outreach opportunities, we will have our digital message boards above the highway that will let folks know that they can expect traffic holds coming up. Next slide. So we are going to be using relatively the same outreach tactics for rock blasting, which is our normal construction activity communications. So we have our project website, which has all of the information about our projects, both the history of how we came to the final solution for the project. You'll see general traffic impact information on there as well. And then you'll get there's also project fact sheets available both in English and Spanish. So if there's ever a time that you're going out to public meetings and want to print out those fact sheets, we would love if you were able to do that to pass out any information about the Floyd Hill project. We also have a project hotline number that you can call in on any day of rock blasting or rock scaling activities and we'll give that rock blasting schedule on our voicemail every day. But we will also be updating the voicemail every week regardless about construction activities that folks can expect for the following week. You can also leave a voicemail if you ever have any questions or concerns about the project and our project team will get back to you. Again, we'll be utilizing our social media pages. We'll have a post that goes out every week that talks about upcoming construction activities. So if anybody has Facebook pages and wants to share that information, the more we can share the information, the better. We really want to eliminate any surprises for motorists and residents in the area. We are out and about giving presentations to various community groups. Again, trying to connect with community leaders to spread that message across a broader platform. And then as I mentioned earlier, we have our cotrip.org website. We also have the cotrip planner app that you can download onto your phone and get information that way about I seventy. You can also have a favorite routes on cotrip where you can save the project area and get notifications about any of our closures if you don't want to sign up for our text alerts. But all really great ways to get ahold of our project.
Are you the one that has to answer the voicemails?
I answer them if they get very escalated.
Cause I'm available. I I'm 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 very diplomatic, yeah, so.
We could use a guy like you.
Are you going to keep code trip real time updated?
Yes. Yep. So we are going to be meeting with our traffic operations center to fine tune some of our communications. Right now they are definitely posting in real time, but we want to make sure we're we're not making any mistakes when communicating about the project. We want cotrip to be reliable when folks are driving along the I seventy mountain corridors. We need to make sure we're in constant communication with our operations center. So folks know that they can count on us for providing information on cotrip.
I worry about is, and I don't know if there's a solution, is visitors. People flying in from wherever and they they're, you know, on some sort of time schedule, you know, they want to check in before while there's still a front desk person, yada, yada, yada. I don't know how Lucy's in the audience. I don't know how it's possible for BTO to put that on our on our webpage or on our blast and and what would be the best? If we're going to kind of advise our guests to check out one particular mechanism for getting information, it would be the Floyd Hill twenty one thousand?
Yes, if you want to sign up for text alerts, but cotrip.org would be the best for our visitors. Yeah. So then you can get the bigger picture of all of the projects happening on I seventy. Especially within this area. I know we have some paving projects coming up, both in Vale and in Frisco. That might be impactful to your visitors. But we have talked with somebody and I wish I remembered her name, but she's going to help us get information into the visitor center about the project. So I think that will be helpful.
Yeah, the big thing is I want to focus flying into DIA.
Yeah. Did you put it at DIA? It must be posted all over there.
So we have been in contact with the communications team at DIA. So we are going to ask that they help post that information on our social media pages. We haven't started to do any advertising there yet, but we are in contact with them. And I can mention this now too. We've been meeting with PIOs from Jefferson County all the way out to Eagle County. Again, to try to communicate with visitors within the area as well as local residents. So trying to get that message far and wide. But we will continue to connect with DIA to make sure that folks are in the know and see if we can get some fact sheets up at the rental car companies as well to alert folks that they might expect or to expect impacts for construction.
Maybe just if you can make sure that this, you know, text Floyd Hill to twenty one thousand? That seems like what most of our visitors would need.
You know, and also is say the disregarding blasting or any sort of closures. Do you have a sense, probably this might be better for Jeff or Kurt, but a sense of what all things being, you know, best case scenario, how much longer it will take to come from the mountains to DIA? I mean, pretty much anyone that flies out of DIA, you add four hours, you leave at least four hours before your flight. Now should we tell our friends that we should leave, they should leave five hours before their flight because you're going to drop it to forty five some places or you know, is I mean, I I'm maybe asking you an impossible question.
So not impossible. Yes, I would, I would say if it's a four hour trip from here to DIA, give them a little bit of extra time.
Yeah.
So the forty five mile an hour speed limit, that's for about five miles ish. But with everything else you're going to go through, getting from here to there.
The time of day, day of week, weather conditions.
Time to travel.
I I mean, me personally, I'm the early morning person.
Yeah.
So I can get up here. If I'm coming up here to ski, I'm leaving my house in Denver five thirty, six o'clock. I don't have problems. Come up here and have breakfast going the other way. Same thing. If you're hitting that early morning, you're you're usually.
So you're not doing work at night. I thought you were saying you were having lane.
I want to emphasize that during daytime hours, the lanes that are open are going to be open during the day during those peak times. With the exception of daytime work is those traffic holds for blasting and for scaling. Any lane closure on the highway will happen in the overnight hours. And what we've seen to date is traffic doesn't really back up. Maybe a very little bit at the beginning of the night.
This new configuration, is it going to do anything about the heading east, hunting the sun in the morning?
This question comes up almost every single time. And yes, the sun glare closures and that is a very challenging problem to solve. You look at different ways to solve it. You're either blocking out the sun or you're moving them out. And you know, to block out the sun, you're basically putting I seventy in a tunnel. And that's not feasible for the.
I guess the answer is no.
And so, you know, I do believe that there will be improvements to that with that new frontage road connection that we're making in the safety improvements with the project, but there will likely still be sun glare closures for those times of year that the sun lines up.
And to answer the lane closure question, our times for those lane closures typically end five, six AM depending on the season. So some of the less traveled times, we're able to go a little bit longer into that seven, eight AM. But like Kurt said, we haven't seen backups yet at night. So we're, that's one of those things we keep an eye on because if it helps us, if I can gain a half hour, an hour on one end of the shift or the other, we're going to try, but we haven't had two yet.
How long do you expect this to actually relieve traffic? What's the lifespan of?
So the bridge is being designed for a hundred years. And so the nice thing about the express lane is you have that option for travel time reliability. And it's going to be in a dynamic told express lane, which means, you know, it'll be told to keep it flowing. And so if you have that meeting, if you have that doctor's appointment that you got to make it to, you can jump in that lane and know that you have that travel time reliability through there.
Yeah. And I think council is getting free season passes.
Do you imagine that it should be, because I saw one of the things in here is that it would be fleet, free flowing traffic? How long do you expect to have free flowing traffic from this project?
In the express lane? Indefinitive.
The regular lane for regular people.
So all of our traffic modeling was done through twenty forty five. And that's going back to, I think FHWA has a twenty five year requirement. So when we started our design period, so all of that modeling out to that point, you know, it it varies on the times of day. But we still see, you're still going to see the Friday, Saturday, Sunday backups. It's just that many more people heading that direction. And that's why the toll lanes are part of this project is that that's the trip reliability.
But we are relieving the bottleneck that exists there.
One of the bottlenecks, right? Because there's just more bottlenecks.
Till there's a wreck. What population growth number you're using in that modeling?
I don't off the top of my head. They've, I know it's been tweaked many times because FHWA stays pretty on top of it. But our traffic folks, I know they're using the the most up to date stuff.
Are you guys going to do anything differently with two eighty five in anticipation of heavier traffic over there? In terms of traffic management or anything?
At this point in time, it's not in the plans. I know there are projects on two eighty five, but the next big one there is the Kings Valley interchange. So a lot of the focus, at least on west program, which only covers up to Park County. It's just been trying to make everything safer through there. So there's a lot of challenges. I mean, there's still two lane road and a lot of that segment. So I know that's the start, but I know there haven't been discussions that I've been aware of.
Well, and our message is stay the course. I seventy is still your best option. You know, we're not shutting it down during the day with the exception of the holds. You know, we're limiting those impacts. We're keeping those lanes open. We're keeping I seventy moving during those peak travel times.
And I know you'll do your best. I just encourage you to pay attention to eighty five and see if you see patterns change. I anticipate they will personally.
Oh, you know they will. How much of this is the federal government paying for percentage wise?
Was the recipient of the largest federal grant that C dot's ever received from the US Department of Transportation. So we got a hundred million dollars in infra grant funds awarded to us last year. So we are currently budgeted at seven hundred million dollars.
I thought it'd be over a billion.
Other questions?
Everyone's short staffed in in probably in the country. Are you guys pretty comfortable that you you keep this thing working?
We are, and we are seeing that reflective in pricing that's coming out. And we know that there's even a little bit of a premium to get people to come up to the mountains and work in the mountain environment. That's something that we just, you know, we understand and do feel confident that we can have the workforce to do it.
Cool.
On communications, I mean, in the end, that's what our residents, what our visitors are going to be most interested in. Like, how long is it going to take me? What should I expect? So I want to make sure what I heard was correct. That our best resource to drive people to, it's not necessarily tax. There's those only come out so many times a day. It's CO trip.org. Is that where we want to be? Used and I'm wondering if you do. I know the project is somewhat dynamic, but you have like a one pager high level like people should avoid X times during X days, X months. I mean, I think that'd be incredibly helpful both for us and tourism office lodging partners just to not overload people with information. I mean, it's fascinating, the history, everything going on, but ultimately people care. How long is it going to take?
Exactly right.
Yeah. So cotrip.org is going to be the number one resource followed by our text alerts. And then our website will have all of that information about what days to avoid. If you just want a one stop shop for traffic information. We do have a fact sheet on there as well. And then we'll be sending out a PIO toolkit to all the PIOs throughout the city and counties. Like I said, from Jefferson County all the way up to Eagle County. So they'll have that information that they can share through their social media channels about what drivers can expect on I seventy and how to prepare and advance. If you want to go to the last slide. These are the different ways that you can stay informed with the project. So again, that website's going to have that one stop shop for all of the information, but cotrip.org and the cotrip planner app that you can download onto your phone. Really great way to stay informed, not only about this project, but about our projects statewide. We have several projects happening on I seventy this summer and we'll have more next year as well. And then of course you can get ahold of us through our hotline and then our email. We always encourage folks, they have any questions or concerns for the project to feel free to reach out to us. We do want to hear from everybody. If they have concerns about the project, specifically people who live within the area. We know that they drive the section of I seventy differently than we would drive. We work up in the area. So if there's anything that they see that we can change for our construction setup, work zones, we'll look into it and make sure that gets addressed.
Great. Another thing, I'd say reach out to the rental car companies too. Get these, yeah.
Okay. We were up here two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and we met with a lot of the PIOs on this side, the public information officers. So and a lot of those concerns, we've had those questions and they all have signed up. They're working with our PI folks on those questions. How do we, how do we tell our people? I remember talking specifically to the gentleman at Copper Mountain. I don't care about the rest. How do I tell my people how long it's going to take them to get to PIA? So we're definitely focused on that. I think we have those one pagers developed and we just got to start getting them out to everybody.
Great. Part of the I seventy coalition. And so we have those routine meetings and ninety percent of that stuff involves C dot.
Awesome. Well, thanks for taking the time to come up today. We really appreciate it. Good luck.
Yeah, you must have done something wrong in your judgment with this thing, right?
We're gluttons for punishment.
Yeah, seriously.
Well, thanks.
Yeah, that is gonna be great.
All right, planning commission decisions. In the everybody got any questions?
Oh, no.
Eric, I know when we were looking at the pre agenda meeting, I know this topic of the hot tubs came up and Mark let us know that they are have that on the agenda to discuss planning commission at the next meeting, whether we want to look at some code changes to deal with placement, visibility, et cetera, noise, right?
It may require a cone of silence.
Questions you guys have, we can forward those on to the.
Yeah, it would be, you know, I think whatever our rule is for placement, I think we really we need to look at that. I have a hot tub on our street that's it's right on the street on the on a deck and it's really probably the worst possible place for it because it really echoes through the cul-de-sac. So you know, as we move down the road, I think it's, I think it's important.
I mean, I would think that you'd want some language in there that is the number one that I mean, I would think that you'd want some language in there that is the number one, that it, that it's not visible from. You know, maybe public right of ways or accesses, but then that we require them to put them in the place that would have the least.
Impact.
Impact to any adjoining properties uh, relative to noise and those.
In screening.
Screening, you know, those types of things. And so that it really, you know, they, they have to look at it from that perspective.
Yeah, and if we could further define that term, that would be even better.
Yeah, we took a look at, there's over a hundred hot tubs in the historic district alone.
Wow.
Wow.
Wow. Lot of energy.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions about.
A lot of water.
Planning commission. Yeah, all right, Mark, thank you. All right, we go to legislation and uh, the first is the outdoor display. Amendments, first reading, display of outdoor merchandise code change, Mark?
So, there was a request a few weeks ago with the council to consider allowing paddle boards outside. Um, as outdoor displays, you know, otherwise our code limits to one item per store. So if um, outside, so someone wanted to put some of their rental fleet out, they couldn't do that. Um, council was amenable to that, so we have added a new. We're calling it um, oversized outdoor equipment. And so there's bicycles, paddle boards. We also put. Canoes and kayaks in there, similar vein. Um, and we've made allowances for those. They do have to come through, get a class D minor permit. We want to make sure they're not putting them somewhere that they're. Impeding pedestrian flow, that type of thing. Uh, we also further defined the term bicycle to include e-bikes and ski bikes. Because we know we've got e-bikes out there that are already in those fleets that are being rented. And finally, uh, not related to that issue, but as part of the amendments. Um, this thing that we talked about at the last meeting where the town manager could set a third. Uh, weekend of a year for outdoor sales where stores can have their merchandise outside for the weekend. So that's a summary of the bill.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions? I, I have a question that's not about this. I'm noticing more neon. Inside stores that you can see from outside. We used to be pretty tough on that stuff and it seems to be creeping. In a bunch of different locations and I can't totally remember how we've handled it in the past, but if you could just internally.
Sure, we'll take a look.
The new thing to do. Yeah, can we get new, new backer bag to walk around and yell at everybody?
There are two from him by then.
So, you know, years ago, people would hang beer signs on the inside and that was not allowed. We were pretty tough on that. Now all of a sudden, seems to be. Getting prolific again. Before it gets too crazy.
Take a look. Real quick, does changing the term bicycle here impact anything related to open space since it now includes e-bikes?
No, well, it, it's, it's defined just in this code.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not.
A good catch, Franken. All right, thanks. Uh, we also have an ordinance approving the Breckinage Tourism Office lease.
Mayor and council, this is a first read of an ordinance that would allow me to execute a five-year lease with the. A tourism office and our building next door at the professional building for two thousand three hundred and sixty-five square feet. They'll be located on the first floor. Uh, we hoping to get them in there at some point in September, October, I think. And we did a gross lease of this, so it'll be six thousand a month for that uh, facility with a three percent escalator each year. Uh, over the term of this, of this lease, so.
Questions? Fair enough. All right, uh, managers report, public projects update. Hi Shannon.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I don't think I have anything additional to add to this memo, but I'm happy to take questions.
I have a fiber question. So I'm wondering after meeting with um, Gorman and Alta Verde, there's some. Uncertainty with what they would connect to. I'm wondering if that was resolved and also. Um, if there's any issue within our contracts for the Justice Center or Stables Village that they wouldn't exclusively consider. Our own fiber. So I don't know if it's a Shannon or a.
Do you have an update? Because Kristen's not present today.
No, so I think um, maybe Lori, when they come down for housing, can answer whether or not they've had more conversations with Kimball. On Alta Verde and the last I knew we were planning on a bulk deal for the Justice Center. But we'll check to make sure and Stables, the conduit will be laid for fiber, but we can't. Because they're individually owned homes, we won't be able to um, force people to get aloe, but we hope that they will.
Okay, thank you.
Can we hook up aloe and then they can opt into something else? At the homes?
It'd be nice to get that, get them dug to the home.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of coming back and paying for it afterwards.
Like we did it in the willing.
Right.
Yeah, let me talk to, to Kristen. We could probably do the drops to the house while they're under construction.
Seems like it makes sense.
Well, we would have the developer do it, I think, so um. Yeah, I think that would be possible and I don't know about actually hooking it up.
Yeah, I guess my question was about the drops, really.
Okay, yeah. No, if they wanted that, then like Comcast would have to come out and, and do that, yeah. Thank you.
Uh, anything else on public projects?
Cam's coming along nicely, huh?
Thank you.
What's good?
It really does. I've been following it from above. I ride out on. Horace Road, just to look down. It's pretty darn cool. All right, uh, mobility.
Mobility.
Where do we need, which memo needs to be updated on?
Listen.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I have no additions to the packet, but I'll be happy to take questions.
Where can we get Frankie Ride stickers? Eddie. Okay.
Actually want to support it, great, no?
Yeah. You know what my favorite is? Here's my favorite, is when there's three kids on a bike. I'm a huge fan of that. It's pretty awesome. The number one, it's really hilarious. I mean, I, listen, I think it's been. I poo-pooed it. I was wrong. I'll admit it public. It's really been wildly successful.
You know, the average ride is one point seven miles.
Have you been riding it?
I have my own.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot faster.
No, I actually, I think it's great.
And we had some discussion with um, lots of interested folks who love the current program and. Want to see a big expansion and want to see winter bikes. So just feedback for you to.
Awesome. Um, we will have uh, an update at the next meeting on the survey that was out, so hopefully we can kind of. Put all that together and then get some more feedback about that officially.
On the buses, I point out that um, the trolley sure is getting a lot of numbers.
Yeah.
That must be important, guys.
Maybe, maybe they're just people riding it up and down and up and down.
Who cares?
Maybe it's ranking.
I think it's really important for the business community, particularly at the south end, to move people.
This is a good time to talk about the parking app.
Yes, I already mentioned it to them, but if you want to.
I don't know if you guys have been having the issue, but I am having a lot of people talk to me about the passport app not working.
I have too.
And there, there are people that use it a lot. They come to the restaurant and it's just not. Payment declined is a big one. Even though they've re-put, you know, I mean, it happened, it happens to me a bunch of times. They put their card in, no, so.
All kinds of complaints, but that's certainly what I'm, and it just, it just kind of pulsates and doesn't go, yeah, but yeah.
Yeah, and I won't speak for them, but I would say make sure you're on wifi first and foremost. Uh, that usually fixes it, but. Uh, we are seeing issues with cellular and then also.
If you're out in the, you know, in, in the streets, wifi sometimes not available.
Right. In, in most of our areas that we have the service, it should be available.
Wifi, so it's really robust in the core of town.
Oh, okay, yeah. But it's still not working because I have that and it's still, it's the payment decline thing that is what I'm seeing the most. People are saying, I put my card in again, that's definitely not it. So I don't, I don't know what that.
I'll deliver that back to them. We met with them last week and gave them some of that feedback, but it wasn't the payment decline. That's usually um, an outdated app. So maybe they need to update their app.
What did I get? I get something I wrote, I wrote uh, uh, Shannon. That uh, it says, yeah, I can't remember. Are they increasing enforcement? And I'm not necessarily against that, but uh. I mean, I just, I think there, there's a lot of frustration of people just getting tickets that I'm hearing.
No, enforcement hasn't increased. Any, anything further on that?
They might have better staff. Network error warning, that's what I got, network.
That's the one where you should be connected to wifi.
Okay, right. Depending who's getting the tickets, I've been screenshotted some stuff from. Um, what's the complaining? Yeah, one man's complainers. Um, the, some of the people that are on there, I know who they are. They're just, they're recidivists.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, those are people that just are not.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not necessarily buying in, I'm just curious.
I'm not buying into some of that.
We quit doing um, the first, the warning. A couple of years ago, probably. And uh, since that time, if you remember the annual. Plan that Matt presented, there's a lot of tickets.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and uh, yeah.
Like I say, I'm not, we need to enforce.
There are a lot of tickets being written.
Oh, correctly, a lot of the complaints on that particular feed were around people um, disliking the escalating fine structure. Which means they're just getting more tickets.
When we see the, next time we have sort of a report of our um, fees for different lots and on the roads around town. Can we also look at the hours? Because I have heard several times in the last few weeks that there are different hours where. We start charging and that has led to some confusion. I actually personally had that, but. That was a whole different, but I think that could be um, something we should look at, just making consistent, like ten o'clock.
We work ten o'clock everywhere except for F lot.
In the, in the summer, we are ten o'clock everywhere. Uh, the ending time is different in the summertime. Mainly to support Tiger Dredge uh, shows going on in NRO or something in the evening, so that runs till eight PM, but everything else is, well. Main Street's eight PM, but a lot of the other lots are three PM, so that could be an issue.
With them using the same signage on private property. There's a perception that's talent. I mean, I've heard people, what's town charging for parking on the Carlin and on the Carlin lot for? You know, it's, but I, I wonder if we could ask them to just. Different color. Somehow, yeah, somehow, you know, let the public know that this is private properties hiring the same contractor.
Yep, that's great feedback. I gave that to them about two weeks ago when we saw the Carlin um, going on there. The, the signage that they actually have is different from our public signage, but it's the same color, so.
Any other questions for Matt on sustainable or in uh. Mobility, almost said parking. Uh, all right, sustainability.
Great job, trolley drivers.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I do not have any further updates um, other than what's in your memos. I'm happy to take questions.
I would just like to say Hayden did a great job in the Restaurant Association meeting.
Great.
I thought. He uh, he was getting grilled. You know, by a lot of people and sent a fantastic message of. You know, we're gonna do this, but we're gonna be good partners along the way. Did you think so, Jay? I thought he was great.
Great, I'll give him that feedback, thanks.
Jesse, do you want to just give council a little bit of an overview, like three sentences on the meeting with Launch yesterday?
Yep, so we had our kickoff discovery with Launch Media yesterday to talk about the. Um, between now and July first, twenty twenty-four, how we're going to start talking to um, primarily guest, guest facing. Um, but also helping the businesses communicate out about what we're doing, why we're doing it. Um, but primarily just prompting them to, to try and do the right thing at the counter, so. Um, that was a great meeting and um, they're going to come back with a creative brief for us, which will include a timeline as well. Um, and we're really excited. I think they're really excited too.
Sarah Patney from the Crown.
And the Crown was there. Uh, we had staff and then um, uh, three of the, three of the um. Ladies from Launch were there, so it was a good, it was a good group and we're going to keep uh. Moving forward and bringing some ideas back to you guys as that moves along.
Cool.
Let's see, with Paisi Throw in full swing now, we have a lot of people that are recycling that haven't in the past. Do you, is there a one pager that you have that people can put on their refrigerator of their, whether it's a rental or their own house or whatever it is now that. Uh, of discerning what plastics can go in. I know those, there's a eleven hundred oops tags have gone out. Um, but for, especially when things turn over, people get new tenants or whatever it is now that the whole town is. Has the ability to recycle. Um, just something that's easy to reference.
Absolutely, and we can work with Bella and getting that out. We've gotten some initial information out to short-term rental owners, license holders. But not necessarily in-room information, um, so we can provide that through Bella. Yep.
I think to everybody would be, I think uh, every household could.
And we do have, it is available now to download off the website, but we can push it out in a more a um, you know, targeted manner.
I have heard that the simple rule on plastics is if it's got a spout, it's recyclable. If it does not, it's not. Is that accurate?
Um.
It's got a snow?
A bottle. I mean, that, that is um, sort of the common denominator, so that's the, the easiest thing to say. But we, we do also collect yogurt tubs. What's that?
I said, I'm dealing with teenagers, so.
Um, it, that is, you know, that is a safe way to communicate that, but we do also accept yogurt tubs.
Yogurt and, and like cottage cheese, you know. No, you know, it's, it's.
Tubs and jugs, they've called it.
I went to that website.
Throw it out. Don't try to wish cycle.
Do they have to be clean?
Uh, they, they should be rinsed out, but they don't have to be like. I am scrubbed clean. You don't need to put them through your dishwasher first.
Label.
Uh, the labels you can include in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. The tubs are printed labels on there anyway. They don't have an extra label.
Other questions?
Always love the recycling question.
I get a gold star last uh, cycle.
That's right. You got your oops tag with a gold star?
Yeah, I did.
Good job.
That's nice. Yeah, who said I never amount to anything? Other questions for Jesse? All right, thank you. Housing and childcare. Tubs and jugs. Be great.
It's not about recycling.
For sure.
You guys.
We're doing great.
Doing anything these days?
Putting anything in a packet, because it's nothing. No, um, uh, there is nothing from um, housing childcare in your packets. Um, at the next meeting, uh, your next packet, you'll have both a housing work group. Um, minutes and you'll also have childcare from last week, last Wednesday. Yeah, I didn't know if there were any questions though, so. Happy to.
Yeah. Oh, did we advance the conversation with Gorman about having our fiber?
Oh, yeah.
I liked the way you said that, Lori.
Um, yes, um, there were a couple of things that after the um, the walkthrough out there that we um, brought up with. Um, Kimball, one is the um, aloe and um, one is sort of the riverscape and what's going to happen there. Um, so um, I did send her an email. Obviously, I haven't got her final response yet, but it's. I have told her our expectations.
Great. So. No, you go.
I hope it's okay to share this, but I, I thought today at our meeting, uh, we had a housing meeting this morning. I hope it's okay to share this, but I I thought today at our meeting, uh we had a housing meeting this morning. We had a presentation from a private developer that wanted to partner with us and and it really struck me that um, you know, and I think it'll end up. You know, he's gonna bet with staff at this point. It's not ready for a discussion yet by us, I don't think, but um. It struck me that that this probably is gonna have to be a dynamic process as we look at development agreements. You know, what precedent was. It may not still hold because building costs have gone up and, you know, or some of our deed restrictions have been refined and housing helps is refined and and all of these pieces are moving. So um, you know, I just encourage us all to keep that in mind as development agreements might come to us with because we're we're trying to incent in trying to partner with private developers that want to build um workforce housing. And, you know, it's always hard to find that balance and where's the line where we're giving too much.
Well, and I I almost feel like we need to have a discussion about that.
Well, we might want to have a agenda, have a work session.
I mean, I feel like we need to know where our, you know, we used to have that eighty twenty line years ago for annexation. You know.
That might not work anymore.
Well, no, is it ninety ten more what we're thinking? Or you think of more sixty forty?
I don't know. I mean, we'd have to 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 work. I mean, I think the committee could work some with staff to try to come up with um some data points and then some key questions to move the discussion along. But it's still gonna be dynamic as the building costs go up and and um the density, you know, the cost of T D Rs is going up. I mean, there's just a lot of moving parts. But yeah, I mean, I think.
I understand that, but we I really do think we need some.
For annexation.
Well, not even that. I think even for acceptance, we need to know sort of what our, what's the, what's the worst we'll accept? Because what we don't want to do is the staff talking to the developer and then they come in front of us and we say, there's no way. We don't even, we don't need your project. So I think it'd be, I think.
That's kind of why I brought it up. So maybe.
Yeah, the council first, I I think we need to have an agenda item at some point about that, just to get some guidelines.
Not a specific project, but just.
No, just guidelines of what.
Data and some time.
Challenges we've seen and because this was a good um sort of presentation that
I thought it was.
Really, you've got numbers there and you're seeing, you know, this is why the private sector really, in some cases, just can't.
Right.
Partner with us. Um and the the this could be a great location.
Yeah, and it was a, I think a good, genuinely well intended developer who has a a quite a number of of long term units in his in his portfolio or portfolio already, so.
Some are big proposals from developers and this is a fairly small one, so you know.
I think there is opportunities there that we have to consider. We're in the past, you know, maybe donating the density on this or and waiving some fees. We're kind of a no brainer, of course. But now, I mean, is it worth on top of that, you know, subsidizing fifty thousand per unit? Because we can't build it anywhere near that.
Yeah.
But if somebody else built it and as long as we've locked in in perpetuity, is it worth it? Those are the types of things I think.
And there's there's definitely a difference between town owned land and somebody else's own land and what we're willing to get.
Bring the land to me. Usually doesn't have nasty on it, right?
Right. No, and that's why.
It's seemingly worthless.
I think we need a bit of a discussion just to get a sense of what the council is willing to accept.
Correct.
For. The housing group does it without, you know, and and all of a sudden we're in a, we're in a ugly discussion about that at in council before we set some ground rules, so.
I think it'd be great to have a discussion with um, you know, with with staff.
Yeah, my um, we might need a little bit of time to prepare for that. So I wouldn't put it on a the next agenda, maybe a little bit out there.
I mean, I'm not think it's an urgent thing. Next week or something be fine.
Tonight.
No, I mean, I this is gonna be a month or two away probably, but I I just, just throwing it out because it it really struck me after I left that meeting that this guy was really trying, I think genuinely and and things have changed because I was ready to go. Well, here's precedent.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden it hit me. It's like, guessing doesn't work anymore. And uh, yeah, so.
Well, I mean, our blueprint really says that we are open for business. Come to us. Let's talk through opportunities for somebody other than us to be building projects. So um I think we want to continue to be true to that. That part of what we want to do is incentivize the private sector.
Yeah, I I totally agree. What I don't want is you to come and get knocked down by council because we disagree. So for you to have because things are changing. I I agree with Dick. I'm today, I'm, I am definitely more amenable to giving money today than I was five years ago or.
And then we can set parameters like if if this is required for a bigger development, don't don't waste your time.
Don't waste your time.
You know, this is for people that truly want to develop workforce housing. It's not tied to something bigger, you know? Or maybe it's a portion of market rate, but the portion of workforce has to be higher, right?
It's interesting though, because every single proposal is slightly different or
They are.
You know, they have different things to offer, different sites, challenges, different densities. It's everyone is different, so it's hard to say, well, this is what we're always gonna be looking for, other than maybe just what are we willing now to put into these projects to make them pencil?
I think just the sense of where we all are will be good for you and your staff.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that.
Corey, did you see, did you uh hear any more about the U P K not being supported by the state and where that looks like?
Though, and I have not talked and talked to Ego about it. Um I did get all the information that Johanna sent and people sent with links. Um but I have not spoken to them about it yet.
There was something put out by Nine News saying that, you know, on page one seventy four of three ninety of the bill to support and fund universal pre K that it is privy to a certain amount or in that and some people are not all the applicants are able to get this, so.
I saw that article too. Yep.
It sounded like our current, our programs in Brackenridge were completely funded and and they weren't at risk. Um but it sounds like some other areas could see some changes because it's only a certain type of child that could receive funding after they get to a certain limit. That's kind of what I was understanding.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any reports, so anything uh? Everybody wanted to bring up on some stage or social equity?
Anything else?
Yeah, all right. Uh town attorney update.
Um, I don't have too much, but I will um just say that I'll pass around an order that also in the news. Um, there was a decision on one of our new state laws, the firearms regulation and sales to twenty one and under, which there was also an article in the post about the new housing laws. So we met with um the leadership team and have been kind of triaging all the new laws and how to get them um incorporated into our code where where necessary. And also I think we're gonna start to see some legal challenges and that was the first one that came out of the gate.
Any questions?
No.
All right. Yeah, that was disappointing. Uh H R staffing and analytics update.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um I included in your packet some information about our people and staffing analytics and some data. Um, we did have, just briefly, we did have an increase in Q two, but that seems to be pretty typical with the end of the winter season. Um, it happened last year and if we went back further, I'm sure I could see data support that that's pretty typical. But overall, the information um that I gathered showed a a positive trend um in my opinion. So I have any questions? I'm here to answer them.
Questions? Todd?
New way of calculating the vacancy. It's good to see that under ten, which is cool. Um curious, how do we, did you run the numbers compared to like how we look in just relative to the old metric?
So to the old metric, it's still about the same number of vacancy. I was, I was calculating it based off of our average headcount, which wasn't as accurate as our budgeted F T E. So it's a little bit cleaner to show that we typically have about fifteen open positions. And that is a little variable with us because we can have a open, say transit position, but we can fill it with two, three seasonals. So I'm not too worried about those open positions. It's not like we have open positions that are really hard to fill right now. Um, in terms of, I'm not concerned about the the vacancy rate. So, yeah.
Great.
Good question, though.
Thanks.
And I'll share what I meant, said to you on the way, you know, when I on the way in. I I think this report's fantastic. And I think the data in the report this month is also fantastic. I mean, seeing people coming back and seeing the numbers get back to kind of pre COVID numbers or close to. You know, it shows that our culture is heading in the right direction. That's fantastic. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice job.
One more question. Do you need more tools from us to keep this rolling?
Um, not, not at the moment, but if I do, I will, won't be shy to ask.
Great. Good stuff.
Thanks.
All right. Uh Brackenridge Events Committee update.
Um Kelly, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about this. John's not here today. He's uh on vacation. Um but he put the memo in the packet and Kelly was at the meeting and I was at the meeting. So if you have any questions, we can answer them.
I think the only thing that we wanted to make sure that everybody saw was um that there's going to be a winter triathlon. Um, that's snow biking, Nordic and running on the snow. Um, so a lot of people are very excited. Um Mike McCormick is involved with the planning and um it sounds like, I mean, we've definitely encouraged them to do some sort of a parking plan because Gold Run, yeah, Nordic Center, they'll probably need that based on the number of people interested. He doesn't expect getting to capacity this year, but um I don't know. I think that he could be surprised at how many people are interested. So um I just wanted to make sure that you guys saw that because when I heard it, they seemed to be deep in the planning and I had never heard about it before. So I just wanted to make sure everybody had a heads up.
Kelly, is it put on by Mike or is it under race bracket?
It was under a race. Um it's Mike, but what the what was the triathlon? Isn't there like a triathlon umbrella that he's working under?
Yeah, leave uh everybody. I believe it's USA Triathlon.
Yeah.
Um, so they're anticipating this potentially becoming a an Olympic sport over time, at least in the coming years. It's their hope, see? So.
Snow biking?
Well, the triathlon.
Triathlon.
Sorry, Jeffrey. Um but I think, so this has been run for several years in Alaska and they want to bring it down to, you know, more people basically. So Gold Run is where they're talking about it and they've asked Mike to help organize and run the actual event at Gold, so.
How many participants do you anticipate?
He said it'd be captured six hundred probably, but that they didn't anticipate that this year. And when I told Shannon like, whoa, that sounds extreme. She mentioned that they do lots of high school events that are similar and different events that they've had to manage of this size out there. And so she wasn't super concerned.
Hundred over three days, so probably not six hundred for any one of the days. Um, and I know Scott can talk about some of the events that they've had out there, which have lots of parents and lots of kids and um parking issues that they've been able to manage.
At the end of February, too.
It'd be nice if maybe we could figure out some sort of shuttle.
Yeah.
Just be careful. It's not President's Weekend.
So twenty third, twenty fourth, twenty fifth of February.
That's probably the week after, isn't it?
I think it is. It's usually around the nineteenth. That's President's Day.
I'll tell you that this is great news that this is the exact events that have been spoken. I've heard that we're not doing anymore. Um specifically, things that used to happen at the Brecksky area that due to construction can't happen anymore. Like, these are the things that we're missing that these uh athletic events that bring people into town. They're they're typically really good. Uh they generate good sales. They don't just come in and, you know, paper bag it, they.
If I was a retiring, I would.
Rick would paper bag it.
Um, I I would just mention that Dayton's have um donated the name Brekabiner.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Jean did?
You donated that and it will be, there will be some, um I believe it's gonna be a fundraiser in part for the B O E C as well, but they, but the Dayton's after having that event at their shop for many, many years donated the name to make it. I mean, it obviously fits and it's related to the Burke mine. So anyway, there you go.
Awesome.
Date, so.
Cool.
Yeah, it's gonna be good.
How's the warm tub coming? Is it getting ready?
We've begun um work on the leisure pool remodel. Um we had some challenges with um our our as builts uh for the, you know, the the pool that was built in ninety one. We don't have as builts, so. And they started tearing up the floor. It cut power to a number of our uh rooms and spaces. So we are operating.
We're all there.
And we are operating the gymnasium is um naturally lit at the moment and um people who want to continue to play basketball can either play there during, you know, kind of half light or they can go to Silverthorne. It's still honored there. Uh we've had a few other challenges minor. That's that's the biggest one. But so far they're they're doing demo this week. Things are going well. It's dusty and loud and.
Do you have power now?
To most of the facility, we do. We do not have power in the gymnasium. We don't have power in the pool deck, which is fine. Um, and then we have a few other spots that are kind of limited power. We have hot water that turned around in about in about five minutes.
I just don't want to be seen in the locker room wearing a headlamp. It just, I just don't know what they think.
Stop wearing a headlamp in the in the.
Are we recycling any of the like slide or anything, any chance?
Yes, which can be recycled. Um but the plastic from the Summit Plummet is in the dumpster. I saw it today.
I thought so. I was wondering.
Recycled, but not the.
Put it in the marina.
No, not.
Screw top.
Um, the the lap pool, well, I I know you have this out there, but uh that reopens in a couple of weeks. What's demos done or no?
Uh, the hope is to reopen reopen that uh, I think it was October sixth.
Okay.
So it's a way, it's a time out there. So yes, in the meantime, once again, Silverthorn, October ninth, excuse me. I'm getting these texts from John. Um, the uh, I was off by a couple of days. The um Silverthorn still accepts all users that entire time, although they have a period where they're gonna be working on their pool as well. So there'll be no public pools in the county, but um but yes, we will get that, we will get that reopened as soon as we can after the after the concrete is repoured on the pool deck and we can get people safely to the, it'll be divided off the leisure from the lap.
So on a steam room are usable now or not?
They are one of the, they are down is my recollection. They were definitely down yesterday and I believe they continue to be down because of the power issue.
Not on purpose, like.
It was a bit of a surprise. Yes.
And so we are not having, there's gonna be no more hot tubs, right?
Door hot tub. Our hot tub stays. It's the indoor hot tub that.
Will be a warm tub.
The indoor hot tub is gonna turn into an on deck shower and seating area and there'll be a warm tub in the leisure pool.
Okay.
So the, so the little kiddos can warm up without walking all the way to their side or going outside. They're gonna be able to jump in.
So there will be a hot tub for.
They warm it themselves, too.
Yeah, I know.
But the outdoor hot tub will be the hot tub.
Good, all right, good. Yeah, I guess some people don't, you know, want to cook. This is all he talks about is this hot tub warmed up thing. Yeah.
Understood. Yes, I just got where the the steam steam room sauna are both down. Uh again, not intentional. That was part of the the power issue that we faced.
Request for a cold plunge, uh but we were.
And the cost was um way higher than we thought made sense to come back to council to propose.
It's a cold plunge.
We should get just one of those horse things.
And an ice machine.
Just stand outside.
I like the cold puncher.
Yeah.
So it's like a, it's like a.
It's a hot tub, but it's ice cold. They have a gravity house. They have a old.
I'm sure Doc PJ is all about this.
Yeah, that's just his normal house. That's not the same.
All right. I think the number on that was was definitely six figures for the cold tub. So I know the a new body of water, new pump. There was all sorts of stuff that came along with it. It seemed a little bit out of the scope of the project.
Cool.
Any other questions for Scott or Seth, whatever you want to call them?
No, no, he's right.
Scott, thanks, man. All right, planning matters. So you got us back on track there, Rick. You know, dirty eye about the I seventy questions. Riverwalk pathway design update.
That's gonna be awful.
We have a lot of cushions.
I'm not going to Denver for the next six years. I was gonna tell you.
You.
Without Denver.
I don't need to go. I don't need it either. I'm gonna go next week and that's it. I'll never go again.
What do you need?
Yeah, presentation. I'll talk about the other matters while.
Do you want a break first?
I do want a break.
We're gonna take a quick five minutes. We're gonna take a quick five minutes.
User error going on.
So on the screen, and this is the same information that you guys had in your packet in the infographic that was all together. But just for a breakdown of who participated in our survey and where they came from. So we had, you know, mostly someone who lives full time in here in Breck. And then the next factor was that live full time in Summit County and then kind of dissipating from there for part time. Summit County or Breckenridge residents and then visitors. So we really did target the local community, which was great to see. Go next. So this is just a breakdown of the, you know, type of outreach we did. So we did the online survey along with the interactive map. And we've got, we got 152 responses and then we had nine stakeholder meetings. And then we also participated in an outreach event at the town party. All right. So this graphic is about what we, we saw as top priorities coming back from those who responded to the survey. So the circles are the, you know, bigger the circle, the higher the priority. But as you can see, some of these are really, really tight. So safety and bicycle circulation are one vote away from each other. But safety was number one, bicycle circulation, number two, pedestrian circulation, number three, restaurants and patios, number four, and gathering spaces, number five. And you'll see this kind of broken down in different ways from different ways. We tried to engage the community and you'll see some trends here. So you'll see that safety and bicycle circulation popping up quite a bit. So this is our stakeholder pathway prior priorities. So we asked each stakeholder group, like if they had any top three priorities. Some stakeholder groups only had one priority and some did have two or three. So based on those votes of what their top priority is, that's how we came up with this metric. So bicycle circulation came back at number one from the stakeholders. And then number two with safety, three with beautification and four with pedestrian circulation. So pathway frequency. And I just want to like mention that because most of our responses from the survey were from locals. This is locals using the pathway. So it seems like we have a lot of participation on the pathways from, you know, regularly and frequently using these pathways, which is cool and interesting to understand. Because we weren't sure if people really utilize these on a regular basis. It looks like they do, which is awesome. And then the pathway utilization is how are we using it? So we're predominantly using it for walking. And then that next metric is biking and then, and then after that relaxing with some deliveries, fishing and fun stuff mixed in. So on the left, we have our outreach events that was at the town party when we were talking to people. And we had people write notes and stickies all over the map, which was really, really fun. And the top themes that came out of those comments in discussion with everyone at the party was bikeability and circulation. And that can, we can go ahead and throw pedestrians in there too. Traffic or mobility conflicts and then signage and communication. And I want to just be really clear when I say signage, when we were talking to people, and this is the same what that we heard from the stakeholders, is that signage could be painted on the ground. It doesn't have to be signs, physical signs, but just more clear direction and different ways of communicating that. Cause I know that we're worried about signage fatigue and clutter and stuff like that. So just wanted to make that pretty clear. And then your right is pretty similar, but with cleanliness replacing traffic or mobility for our stakeholder top themes. And how that was really done is we asked every stakeholder group a series of questions and whatever we talked about, like the top themes from those discussions, that's how we highlighted that. All right. We wanted to just highlight a couple of quotes. We had some like fill in questions so people could be as creative as they wanted and just tell us exactly how they feel about the Blue River pathways. So these are just a few of those quotes about strolling or finding a quiet place, loving to use them for biking. And then just a nice scenic pedestrian expressway off of Main Street. All right. So things that were needing improvement based on outreach. So this is like, what is most important for improving next? Obviously, safety covers a lot of things and it came back as number one. But as you can see, very, very tight here. So safety, beautification and bicycle circulation as our top three, followed by our river access and cleanliness. And I think cleanliness and beautification can kind of correlate together as well. So we asked a question in the survey about the living lab improvements. And if you noticed it, if so, what did you think about it? So we had an 83% comeback saying, hey, we noticed it and we think you're on the right track. Maybe it's not perfect, but they think that we're headed in the right direction, which was awesome to see. Cause we want to continue to improve how we use the pathways. And then I'm going to put Jay on the spot here in a second because I know that you did extra credit. But we had a great response to interactive map where people could place pins and make comments on, you know, their thoughts on particular areas of the Blue River pathways. And so you can kind of read through all these. Jay was talking about suggesting a walk, which would be fun to talk about all these spots. But a lot of them can be correlated back to what we heard from the survey and the stakeholders like cleanliness. There's, there's actually quite a couple of material management things in here about dumpsters or location and the cleanliness of those. And then pedestrian crossings, you know, bikeability, there are some signage things in here. And if anybody saw a comment that they want to talk about in particular, I'm happy to go through it. But this was just a really cool way to interact with the community and have them tell us about spots that maybe we're not thinking of.
Thought that was really useful as a whole.
For sure.
The thing that really hit me when kind of going through and walking point by point all the way through town was the challenge that South Main has of where does the, where does the river walk start? You know, it's like, is it going through, you know, the, that plaza where, or is it going to, you know, down the steps? Or is it going to the left of the Distearmark or is it going through F lot? Like there are, there's really no great.
I think legally, right? And correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, but I think it goes reds down those stairs across the decks. The French place and, you know, it goes across the deck there and then connects with the one we.
Which is why they don't want to make sure, yeah, some of their seating probably protrude a little into right away, right?
Not a little.
We also heard that we, we had a representative from, I believe it was Main Street Station or the Village. I want to, yeah, I want to say it was Main Street Station, but I could be wrong and I'll double check. But where they were saying that visitors that they have come get very confused of how to get there. And that they have a hard time explaining to visitors where to go. So, and it was also brought up by our stakeholder group and another stakeholder group, but we would talk to Mountain Wave and they brought that up too.
Yeah, I think their steer mark has mixed feelings on that board of directors, or at least they did when I was involved. There's a group that doesn't want any tourists walking up that driveway. You know, they're afraid there's going to be liability claim or something. Or, and there's one guy who's afraid that if, if the town gets used to having that, then we're going to do an eminent domain and take it. And then there's other groups like the more of the commercial people that want to see as much traffic through there as possible. So I don't know if they would come to consensus or not over there. I kept trying to push for, why don't we make it work and, you know, maybe give up a couple of spots, parking spots by that driveway and make a path work. But I don't know that you, that you could get there with that group, the current group on the board.
I think there's also an opportunity to have the start of the River Walk by F lot there on the west side of the other driveway.
Might be too steep, but I'm 90% sure we have an easement between their steer mark and Park Avenue, whatever.
There used to be stairs there.
I know.
That they took down.
That was part of the deal that those stairs were kept open and they never did.
I was explaining that to John George and he had never heard of that stairs being part of the development agreement.
But I mean, they were pretty sketch during the winter. Those stairs were.
They're just not.
I mean, it's northern exposure. I mean, it's a, it's an accident waiting to happen.
Maybe we look at all those access points because it's bringing people into the.
Yeah.
All of them are important, I think.
And when we look at the low hanging fruit, having some way finding there at the start, I think is something that really came up in that.
You know, men, we do approach the steer mark anyway and see if they'd be open to some kind of path.
Start with Jack and Sodi.
Yeah.
Are there other ones on the map, Jay, that you want to?
Then when you get to the president, good luck.
You know, if the town's going to improve a path there.
The other, you know, the other part that like really grabbed me, which probably stayed in the obvious is right by castaways and directly south there of like how to maneuver that. And kind of same thing. It's just a lot of tables there and, and guests. And then on one side, and then just kind of a difficult merge point into the River Walk where it's like, well, do you go over the River Walk? Do you go under? Do you go around it? Do you go through it? And like that's, it's just amazing. Like today was such a gorgeous day and there's just people littered everywhere, which is spectacular. Like that River Walk is so well utilized and how, and it just illustrated the importance of this project of how do you take that and, and stretch it out.
I, I think developing the east side of the river there behind the Bly building is the, would be easier for us than the other side, which is sort of locked with the.
But is that our land? I don't know.
It is. That's our path, right? Yeah. See where the other side, I don't know if it is.
An easement on the other side, but the easement's interrupted at Castaways where their seating is. So it's not continuous.
Or it is interrupted.
Yeah. So that junction that you're describing is part of the study I'm going to do with the underpasses and bridges. So see what we can do to widen behind the Bly, whether we can get an underpass under Ski Hill, which is probably not feasible. Whether we can do a cantilevered path there. And then what we do with that bridge connection, replacing the existing covered bridge with how we want to split bikes. I'm leaning towards splitting them to the west right now and then working with the Riverwalk Center redevelopment to give more land for the rec path on the west side of the Riverwalk. If that works with how the programming is going to fluctuate with that project. So definitely on our radar. And then we had talked about earlier in the season and we're just looking at getting it implemented now, Kelly, of directing the bikes over the covered bridge. Just as a trial to see if that works for circulation. I know the turning radiuses over the cover bridge is horrible, but.
Maybe you, on your humongous.
Yeah.
On your semi.
Opportunities. If we sign it, will people follow it and will that reduce conflicts on the east side in the Blue River?
Dismount at the new dismount bike sign? I doubt it. That was a suggestion. No, no.
Pandatory.
I think they will follow. Some will.
I don't know. I stood there the other day and watched every person on their bike ride right past.
No, I agree with that. They're not going to dismount. But if you, if you show them to go around.
Yeah.
I think still.
The positive reinforcement versus the negative.
I agree. Now there's just no option.
Puts you there at the dismount zone. So we want to slowly make these connections ahead of being able to do the big infrastructure projects with the bridges, because those, those are ways out. I mean, the soonest I think we could build that is five years and that would be pretty fast tracking. So we do want to grab these as we can to build that backbone of connectivity for the cyclists.
Shannon, if we had to look at a primary pathway to get folks from the, the parking structure to Main Street, where would that be?
I don't know if we'd want to have a primary, to be honest. I think we want to have different options. One of the options being a better connection to the west, that east west connection that we started to develop with the living lab with the barricades that we have going now. We need to finish that connection to Main Street. Look at the circulation in the Wellington lot.
Right. So we're, that's still on the list.
Absolutely.
Cause I think that's the natural.
And Schoonover still, Dick, the Schoonover was an earlier plan member of changing that bridge as a diagonal.
That I just don't think that, I think, yeah, I thought like what you said is not to have a, not look at Schoonover's primary, not look at the others, but they'd be equal.
A lot of pedestrians use Watson from the gondola more so from the parking structure. A lot of people from the parking structure go west through the alleys and a lot of people still want to go directly south. So I think we want to support all of those options to not overwhelm any particular point. And when we do the deconstruction of the Schoonover in May of next year, I think leaving that as a blank slate, testing it out as, you know, a bike facility and gathering plaza will really help us to understand how that space should function and how it could support the Riverwalk best without jumping into a, you know, big new expensive redevelopment project. I think we should let it rest for a couple of seasons and really see what we want to do there would be my recommendation.
Are you talking about some covered parking there? Is that what you're?
For bikes?
Yeah.
We need to grow the hub for the, I know that E-Ride needs more space there. I hadn't really contemplated covered, but if we want to discuss that, it's definitely an option. I mean, that's low cost in the scheme of all public projects. So we can definitely look at that if.
Well, I don't know if it makes most sense there or if we really want it out next to the parking garage. I wouldn't know.
Where people want to get off their bikes.
Like I think the closer to the Riverwalk or to the center is better.
New thing.
As a local, I just wouldn't use it up by the parking garage, but.
Same. You're thinking like covered from the rain, covered.
I don't know. There was a comment in something I read that was like a covered.
That was by the Riverwalk Center, I think. Said that was confused by.
I mean, there's just nowhere in town and it doesn't need, maybe we don't need covered bike storage in the center of town either. We could just have more.
Well, if you, if you were going to have a cupboard, you could have, you know, some electricity in there as well. So, you know, thinking in the future that there's going to be more and more e-bikes.
Yeah.
And people could use it to recharge their e-bikes.
Right.
The utilization of providing more bike parking, whether it's covered, it has chargers and, but all of that is really good to consider. Cause it's definitely something that we heard a lot about.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't, I think just a good racks that you can lock. I don't, I wouldn't, don't think we need it covered. And I think most, you know, people charge before they leave home, but.
So whatever you're saying, just like safer racks where you feel safer to.
Better racks. Yeah.
Lock your bike.
Like we have at the rec center, you know, like kind of burly racks that you can use with a U-lock. You know?
And then I think for any of these, any place where we're doing work on the Riverwalk, if we can think if a water station makes sense there. Really like, yeah, every time I'm in town right now, I just can't get over how I can't find water anywhere. I mean, I know personally where to go. The, you know, the transit station for the buses or whatever. But if I was a tourist in this town, I would be buying water because we just do not make it easy.
And I think, is it the next meeting? We have facilities coming with an update on the plan.
They're going to talk about it at the CIP.
Okay. The first meeting in September.
Maybe we come up with an iconic water station that could help kind of drive that path. That could be multiple locations along.
Like an old school cistern.
The thing that was brought to my attention was the, um, the restroom situation that we have along the Riverwalk. Mainly being at the welcome center where currently it's downstairs below the sewer line. And they're not great restrooms. Yeah. It's really the only public restroom we have at the moment.
Or the Riverwalk, sorry.
Right. And I know that.
A bus in the, yeah, the bus circulation sta- station.
And garage are, you know, great. But like if there's, if we're thinking about reworking the welcome center at all and bringing those upstairs, because that is, I believe that's the majority of the traffic to the welcome center is for the restroom. So I don't know if that's.
Any accessible would be important. We have, our restrooms get unbelievable use from just. Like every shop in town coins people that are restrooms as public restrooms. They're even, it's even on some maps as public restrooms.
Oh, you're kidding.
Oh, yeah. Which is fine. It's fine with me. I don't care. It's just, it's a, it's a ton of people.
If they were upstairs at that visitor's center, that would be a big win.
You're saying get rid of the museum, turn it into a big bathroom.
I mean, I don't want to get rid of the museum, but maybe we can share the space.
Put the museum upstairs.
It is upstairs, but.
What is the big challenge there? Cause we have elevators that are ADA. I mean, I've taken my mom down there. It's not the easiest thing, but it's ADA, right? Isn't it certified? So.
We're not the greatest bathrooms.
I think the issue is throughout town having restrooms, but I don't know if I'd go down that very expensive route of reconfiguring the welcome center where we get so much great traffic, highlighting our history, highlighting be like BRAC initiative. So I don't know if I'd want to touch the welcome center as we talk about everything here.
I mean, maybe we see where our materials management enclosures end up and add some restrooms to that. I don't know.
It's certainly an opportunity we got to look at, right? Like, we're not going to fix it here today, but adding the restaurant or the restroom component in there is, I think, important to look at.
We could use more for sure.
Yeah. And water.
It's going to say, it might be an opportunity to get that information out, whether it's on physical signs or I don't know what we're going to be doing with QR codes and that sort of thing. As we're trying to teach people how to do the bike path through town, how we're trying to teach people about the different pathways. Also share that information about water stations and restrooms.
Yeah.
And I think we want to consider pairing the water stations whenever possible with the restrooms because we really run into seasonality problems with all of our outdoor fountains, which is it's just going to be a huge challenge for us to do that.
Need to partner with private business for bathrooms.
Yeah.
I do.
And for water stations.
And water stations. I think if, I think the town could do it cheaper.
Yeah.
Locations like mine where you could put a water station in and then do something where you help upkeep the bathroom. I, years ago, the town used to pay me for my bathrooms. And then Tom Doherty thought that wasn't cool. So he quit it.
I have his job now. Just kidding.
Um, I mean, I think there are other locations in town that we can do that. So you don't have to do a big thing at the, at the museum, at the welcome center. So.
The welcome center bathrooms, they're like currently, they don't operate well because I think the lift station's broken breaks quite a bit and that they're small. They don't, they don't accommodate the number of people.
They're small. Yeah.
Yeah. Like, I don't know if you.
Yeah. You're going to have to pass the issues with.
I bring my girls down, you know, I bring my girls down there and it's, it's not.
It's not even a two-way staircase.
We had a ADA assessment going on around town, looking at all of our compliance issues around ADA and the welcome center bathrooms are the best out of everything.
Really?
The elevator. Because of the way they were built. Yeah. But those other things still matter. I mean, I know it's the stairways for most people using them in narrow and the size of them. But surprisingly, when they were designed for accessibility, they, they were one of the best ones that they looked at.
The other things that I think it's clear we need to do a better job of is directing people to the restrooms that we do have. Because we've got a whole slew of restrooms that are really close to the welcome center and they likely don't get used as often because people don't know that, that they're open at the Riverwalk Center. Even the parking structure probably doesn't get it used as often as it could. And those are really nice.
Those are really nice bathrooms.
We also need to be sure they are open.
The Rec Create bathrooms are.
They what?
My go-to.
They're one of my favorites.
I, that's a good point, Shannon. And I'd like to mention that we, we had a discussion with, you know, one of our retailers that rents bikes. And they're like, if you guys provided us a map so that we can message this correctly and consistently. They said that that would help a ton because either they're creating their own maps or they're getting maps that are outdated and they don't have the correct routes on there. And they said, if they could just have a map, whether it's digital or paper or both, that would be extremely helpful to them. And I think that that consisting messaging, and I know you brought up signage, is going to help a lot. Especially if it's updated with accurate information.
Yeah. That's why it should be digital because it just seems like everything's a moving target for sure.
Okay. I think we've killed the bathroom discussion. Anything else on the map here that we want to highlight? If anyone else had a chance to look at them, but there was great participation and great feedback, especially at the town party. We had a lot of people who wanted to chat with us about their ideas and experiences along the Blue River.
Cool. Drinks. You get some good comments.
Yeah.
I get quick and creative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Talk more in September.
About, we should. I totally agree. If they can figure Floyd Hill out, we should be able to figure this out.
Raise.
Nothing compared.
Her walkway.
With bathrooms.
Pro.
Great, huh?
Can you remind us, what are the next steps? Like you're still going to meet with the partner organizations?
I definitely, oh, thank you. I forgot to do that on my intro. I was a little out of sorts.
You off on the right foot, Shannon?
So yeah, we didn't do the survey in Spanish. What we want to do is do more than that. We want to have a good outreach campaign with our partner organizations with FERC and Mountain Dreamers to really hit the other segments of our local community to get their input on the project. So I'm working with Mac right now. She's going to bring something with Shannon's help to social equity. And then we hope to launch some additional outreach the end of August. It'd be our.
So our Spanish speaking community commutes on bikes a lot.
We want to make sure we're hitting that, but we want to hit it better than just throwing, you know, translated survey out. We want to do a little bit more in-depth and make sure we're getting their feedback in a way that they're able to give it and feel comfortable. If that helps. And then, like I said, we're going to bring some projects to the CIP discussion in early September.
Are, are we going to have like a, kind of almost like a higher level, like document that kind of defines what we're working towards, that kind of we all buy into and like are working towards? Cause to me, there's like, just this huge, it's, it's a statement piece, the whole corridor. And you know, I think it's going to drive the user experience and you know, there's a branding opportunity there. And like, I think it's important to, you know, think about the discussions with BCA and like, is there going to be public art? And what that's all going to look like. And so we're going to have something that unifies kind of the crew here that we're all marching towards.
Yeah. We just need a little bit more time to get that master plan document out there.
Yeah.
And we are working with BCA, we're working with rec history, BTO, we've have all of these moving parts. I think it'll be a bit longer before we have document to share publicly.
Cool.
But that's definitely part of the scope.
I think that'll be just super valuable as, I mean, this is going to take years to work through, right? So thanks for working on that.
Definitely.
Are the small things like Luigi's or different areas that we know have some issues? Maybe the cleanliness. I feel like that's something we don't really need to wait on. We might not be trying to change their, you know, use patterns as far as people spilling out into the Riverwalk with tables because we haven't decided if we want to manage that, you know, strongly or not. But the enclosures that we're consistently getting feedback that they're stinky and gross, are we acting on that stuff now? Can we?
Let me answer that.
Yes, please.
I'd like to be more proactive, but I think we tend to still be a little reactive. You know, somebody will bring to our attention that that area behind a restaurant, you know, at, or at off Adams is just, you know, a pit and then we'll get somebody over there. And so, you know, I think that my hope would be now that we have, you know, this extra person that's really helping to manage some of that stuff that we can be more proactive in identifying issues like cleanliness. And if we know, I mean, it's not that big, right? We gotta, we've got to go after these, these property owners that aren't making it look right and accumulating trash and junk. And be, and if we have to work between our community service officers and our, our code people and our material management stuff between those three people, we should be coordinating and proactively looking at that area. So.
I can tell you 300 blocks, the worst block on the whole thing, I think.
And Shannon and I will follow up on that at our meeting tomorrow with staff and. And, uh, Shannon and I will follow up on that at our meeting tomorrow with staff and, uh, well, you know, we will do a better job of being proactive on that, because I don't like having to hear about it, you guys.
Rick, will the street cleaner go down that?
I don't know. Do ours, do we clean the Riverwalk? You talking about the pathway?
Yeah.
No, yeah, the, the Riverwalk itself, the, I mean, would it help, do you think? It's a lot of grease is the problem.
Cool. Thanks, Jane.
And some of the business backs are pretty bad in that block as well.
Interesting, uh, to, you know, Dick's, uh, and Todd's, uh, exploration unveil in that, that, um, delivery system that they're working on keeps resonating in me every time I walk down Riverwalk. Like, today there was a semi in the Riverwalk backed up, you know, to the dredge. You cross the whole thing, right? It's just like, wow, and that, and that's at, that was at one o'clock this, one thirty this afternoon. And, you know, you just, all you see is semi delivery trucks in every spot of our Riverwalk all day long. And, you know, that's, uh, it, it, I think it's worth looking further into and seeing where that can take us. Uh, I think getting a couple of those semis out of the core town.
There's a lot, it's, it's a process and we are looking further into it. It's, uh, James is leading, uh, part of a group that are working together with Matt and, and, uh, we are marching forward, looking at the feasibility of what replicating a program like that and what that could look like in Breckenridge.
That's amazing, that's great.
Have it on the CIP.
Location will be critical.
Yes.
I mean, yeah, we, we're looking at all these different things through that lens of could this be used? Could this be used for that? So, that's, you know. Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Go.
Thanks. Riverwalk Center renovation scope.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Hey, Julian.
Yeah.
Riverwalk renovation scope.
All right. Well, at your council retreat back in May, you identified the Riverwalk Center, um, renovation and with cer- certain improvements. Um, on kind of the to-do list, so we just wanted to check in, um, and see what you thought of the scope after you've had some time to think about it and, uh, make sure that we captured it correctly. Um, so we had indoor restrooms, speaking of restrooms for the day, and, um, increased lobby and improved entrance spaces, pedestrian and creating a pedestrian-friendly inviting entrance and building frontage and which may involve relocating, um, Paley. So, with that kind of narrow scope, kind of looked at a uh, stakeholder group that would consist of just myself as town staff and, and Shannon Smith and, um, Tamra with BCA and, um, actually I said BMF, but I meant NRO. So Dave is part of that group as well, and then Todd is our, um, our town council rep, so. That is sort of where we're at. We'd be looking at doing, if you agree on the scope or, or something similar, we'd look at maybe issuing an RFQ or an RFP, um, in December, January, um, of this year, um, and then doing that work in 2024. Construction potentially starting 2025.
But I think the important thing for the group as they look at their scope is to decide what's necessary. I mean.
Yeah.
I know what I think's wrong with the place, but that doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be fixed. You know, there, I mean, there's a lot of, there's, I mean, if you could tear it down and start over, you could fix the problems. How, how much of a problem are the outdoor bathrooms? How much of a problem are, you know, for me, one of the big problems is the way the seating is arranged. And those, those decks, I think are terrible, but they're also used for other events. So, you know, if you're in that second row, you can't really, it's a bummer. If you're in a second row on any platform in a seat that, you know, to see a show, you can't really see because somebody's at your level, so. But like I said, we use those for tables also, so be curious what the, you know, as you guys talk about it, what's legitimate concern and.
I'd like to have it prioritized, find out where, what is the, the deal breakers? I, I might have a different view. I, I, I don't, I don't look at what's broken and what do we need to fix? I look at what is the potential? What is the pe- potential for this facility? Bigger than an arts facility as a community facility, as a community gathering, a, a true community facility. I, I look at the potential of some of the other facilities that are built, you know, Jerry Ford and Dylan and, and some of these others and, and, um, you know, I don't know, we have that much real estate, we don't, we don't have that much land there. But, you know, I, I think the scope of this could be a first phase, but I think it would be a shame to just put a Band-Aid on these issues when the big, big scope as a community facility, that might be wasted money because to me, a, a, you know, really utilizing this to its potential, we, we need a broader view of it, in my opinion. We, we need more community members, you know, we'd need, need events committee people. Certainly it's got to work for the NRO, I mean, that's why we built it. I mean, I think, you know, the history originally was oriented to the river. The concession stand used to be where the loading dock is now. And, and it was too small, it didn't work. And so it was moved and it, it's still too small and doesn't work. I, I think we really need to look at it and say, who are we and what do we want to be with that facility? At some point, it's, it, to fix it, like you said, Eric, i- it's, it's going to be a major endeavor. But I think this, this location, it is the center of town.
Yep.
And it's the biggest building in town. The potential there is astronomical. And I, I think it is a place to spend a big chunk of money, but with a broad community view, not just a, a, a much broader view than we've looked in the past. And, and really bring in, you know, c- community people and community events. Um, I, it, you know, I, I, there's a handful of things that it probably still needs to work for, but it's, it's probably going to. Um, and then figure out how to phase the project and how to, um, how to make it work the best it can along the way. You know, I, I, I could see a, you know, a five to six to eight-year plan to the kind of money it's going to take to truly make it, you know, the, the facility to its potential for the whole community. So I, I, you know, I, I hesitate to support doing a Band-Aid without looking at a bigger view. I would rather take a year and engage a broader group of community members, you know, bring in the BTO, bring in events committee people. You know, bring in a, a, a large group of folks to, uh, to, to really take a look at the potential of this facility and, and then see if we can get consensus on that. And then, you know, we could do an RFP and, and engage some, some work in, in helping to, to narrow that a little bit. And then look at how, how can we phase it and make it the best it can be along the way? That's, that's my view, and I don't know if I articulated that well or not, but, uh, I think it'd be a shame to do something like this when the true beauty of it is on the riverside, really. I mean, I know the mountains, the west side is beautiful as well, so it's, it's really should be a two-sided, but the riverside has become the back door and, um, that's a shame. And if we just focus on the bathroom, it's going to probably continue to be the back door and, and wow. Talking about under utilizing this, a, a incredible, um, facility with potential in the center of town, that would be a shame. So, that's my view.
Yeah, I, I echo that as well. And, you know, to me, it's, it's one part of the piece for that Riverwalk pathway. And Julia, when we walked through it, you know, it was interesting, right? Like, it, it's getting used by the trucks, like you mentioned, and it's, the, the zones used and there's lots of folks walking between the river and the Riverwalk. And, and quite frankly, a lot of it just felt tired and I'm excited that we're going to embrace like freshening up the whole zone. But yeah, there's some of the overgrowth with some of the, the willows and, yeah, it's just this zone that is ripe for freshening up. And I think to me, I'd, I'd like to have that vision of like, as a group, like, all right, what are we working towards? Like, what is, to me, it could be the crown jewel of town and really kind of drive visitation and why people come and visit and spend time and, and money and want to be in our community and also provide a refuge for, hey, you need a break, it's been a long day, go down to the river. So I, I'd like to start at, at kind of a higher level and, and kind of figure out how that, that building fits and then what are we trying to accomplish there? How, how, you know, how does it make Lucy's job easier when she's trying to drive visitation here? You know, how does it make Tamra's job easier when she's trying to book events and, and arts?
And Dave's as well.
Yeah, exactly.
So that was, that was why this facility was built, for those that don't remember. It was for the NRO.
I mean, it still works pretty well.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, like, like, I, I go there and I've, I've, I have, have great times there. I mean, I, I, I agree, but.
Yeah.
I, you know, a little, I think if, if you ask a, get a bunch of people in a, in a room, they're all going to come up with ideas how to improve it. And, and I think that sometime, it, what, all their ideas, if you put them in one piece of paper, could be insurmountable and maybe even confusing. I mean.
I think we did the destination management plan, that's the exact s- same type process. And I think we need to engage the process like this in the same manner.
Yeah, and probably involve a, a professional to help lead us and what's the next step for arts in Breckenridge? And how do we make a facility that fits that into the future? I agree with you, Jeffrey, um, that it works, you know, on some levels or maybe many levels, but I think what we should be doing, if we're going to look at doing anything there, is really ask ourselves what we want this to be. Not just like, does this work, but what, what's the next step for arts? Um, and maybe even community-wide, I hadn't thought that broadly, you know, it is the center of town. I think it's something we should keep in the front of our minds.
Gathering space.
Yeah, keep that in the front of the minds, but I also, you know, I agree with what Jeffrey said, it's like, if each of us is in the room, we're all going to have different opinions and that's why we just need to have a professional and some leadership, um, from BCA and our other partner orgs, but someone who does this for communities, I feel like, to lead like a master planning process, like the destination management plan, so that we can decide. And maybe the end result will be, we like this, we don't want to compete with Silverthorne, Dylan for their different, you know, events and this is our niche. But I think that now is the time to figure that out, what is our niche in this Summit County community?
You know, I, I don't disagree with, uh, Dick's idea to blow up the whole thing and scrape it all, like you said, um.
Did I say that?
To what you want.
Great public. But I, I think that it is, i- it's a great, in all seriousness, I think it's a great point that before we get in the weeds, we, we need to look and go, okay, is this structure satisfying what we need today and moving into the future? Or is it completely underutilized because of the way that it is, um, set up? And do we need to look at, you know, either minor modifications? Or do we need to look at possibly scraping it and starting over? And what, and where in between do we lay based on what our goals are? Personally, I would, my goal would be to have higher utilization, to be able to have activation in there every single day or night of the week where there's just that it's buzzing, um, and that looking ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, that it is, it's set up in a way that it supports, um, you know, the future of this town and, and the, the nucleus of the town and represents us well. And again, I, I, at this point, I'm not in a place to say, oh, that means just moving bathrooms inside. Or that means, you know, reimagining the whole entire spot, which, um, yeah, I, I, I think that we need a larger view of who do we want to be? What do we want to attract? And what is the necessities of that? Is this going to be a wedding venue that needs a lot of flat area? Is it going to be a concert venue that needs to have lawn seats, uh, where, you know, where it's open and that there's those, you know, the, the seats and then, uh, general adminis- uh, admission, admission where there's lawn seats? Wha- what, what does it need to be and who does it need to accommodate? Um, to move us into that long-term that hopefully it has a better, uh, usability, future usability than the Floyd Hill development, right? Like, hopefully it lasts longer than fifteen, twenty years and that i- it's something that we can really, uh, hang our hat on as, as a, as something, so. Be interesting to see.
I guess my biggest thought with the big direction we're heading, whatever we do, let's plan for decades and decades into the future. I mean, the Band-Aid solution of their easy Band-Aids, something's leaking, whatever, if it's not a huge structural on your taking, yes, let's do that now. Because I think the longer-term vision is getting a little more input and deciding the direction that we need to go in. And again, none of us are event producers, none of us are architects. It's something that we'll look to our partners and staff, but also I think we could benefit from a professional that expertises in this event, community gathering space. Um, in my mind, community gathering stands up. It's not just an event space that the doors are shut, it is somewhat of a community gathering place. Um, walking through today, you see how much life, like the river has, the lawn has right there, and that's not echoed throughout the building. I mean, the building shut off and closed. It can't always be activated, but something that maybe is more welcoming and at the same time fits the needs of our partners. And, um, we need to understand, is that better bathrooms? Is it an entryway? What is needed? So at this point, like, I'd like to, whatever we do is a very high-level plan in the future, but having that exploratory phase where we understand what has been, is on the table.
Anything to finish up with? Great project fully supported.
All right.
If I could, based on what I'm hearing here.
Yeah.
Um, I think we need to shift directions a little bit and what, I think probably what I would propose on this is that we come up, you know, we're, we're either, um, we will come up with a process. So we have some, we have, um, you know, we need to engage a consultant. We're either going to have, um, I don't know if we would engage that person this year or we'll, it puts up, we'll get some dollars into the budget for what that's going to cost. We have some critical partners to this. We know we have BCA that manages our facilities and knows the ins and outs of that facility better than anybody. And, and certainly they'll have to set at the table along with NRO and other user groups and BTO and that. But the, but for me, it's important that the town manages this process because it's a town facility and too often these outside consultants come in and we pay them big dollars and they're not meeting the goals of what the council wants to see. And I want that to be, we, we've had good luck and some bad luck recently, right? And they need to know upfront because there, there's an appetite. Anybody can come in and imagine something, right? But at what cost? There's a limit to what we would spend on this facility. And, you know, we might not spend fifty million dollars on this because if you scraped it and redid it, you're probably at a minimum fifty million dollars to do this. Yeah. And so, you know, but we might have an appetite for a twenty million if it got where we were going. And I think people need to understand that it's not, because when you go in there and just start doing this stuff, next thing you know, we've got something that's. Because when you go in there and just start doing this stuff, next thing you know, we've got something that's like. And then it's collecting dust somewhere because it's just not even reachable for us. And so we've got to work through that and. Let us talk about that internally. You know, we we've got, you know, we did studies in twenty thirteen, we did studies in twenty sixteen, we used. Um, what's the?
Um, simpler brown and.
Remember the guy out of Aspen too, Harry T.
Dick asked the right question at the start. What do we want the facility to be before any of this, before you talk about? What it's gonna look like or who it's even gonna, yeah, for.
We need somebody to help manage and feel so like that, just like.
Question. That's the real question is. Are we okay going on with it as it is and just keeping it going and, you know, doing some Band-Aids? Or do we, or is the town? Want to become, does the town want this to become something else?
Mm hmm.
In addition to what it already is.
And then I I think then what that something else might be, Eric. What could that look like?
And that will, that's right. That will inform everything else. If. If everybody decides, look, there's no way we're gonna do, okay, what goes on in Dillon or Silverthorn. Let's just try to make this the best it can be. Or hey, we want to do what they're doing over in Dillon and hell with it, let's blow this thing out. I think. There's a huge range. I don't know that anybody knows where they are.
Yeah.
I I think before we even involve the public. We need to talk about with the partner organizations. And the, you know, the council first about, you know, the vision and then.
I don't want to be anybody else. I want to be Breckenridge.
Yeah, but it's hard to know, like, I also. Would love someone to come in and give us a few options. Because I just don't know how to dream that up myself. Like. Here's a good place for Breckenridge to make its mark. And you know, I mean, I think that we have a lot of partner orgs and maybe Lucy could help facilitate that conversation with us or. Um, I don't know. I do think we're gonna need some help with that.
Let, okay, let us run with that for a while and. A little bit. Come up with some ideas and come back to you.
Great.
Is that enough, Julia? Yeah?
I think it's that enough. Yeah.
Copies of those studies that could start the conversation and.
That'd be great. Can you email them to us, please?
Before we go in.
The code read.
I know I read the one.
Is this the old ones?
There was one very exciting one, but.
The events are obviously, the event needs are. Different now, I think, but. Where they planned expansions and what the limitations of the site were.
Right.
Somewhat. Universal, so.
Yeah, although things are a little different. We do have a different parking reservoir now. We do have. You know, they're definitely think we we know more about some stuff, so.
I'll also think there's parking potential. I don't know if it's reasonable price, but you know, pass the horseshoe up into F lot.
Yeah.
And making that a continuous.
And we were looking at.
And decking, you know, potentially decking some of that and everything else. So yeah, I mean, there's potential to utilize the parking lot too. So I. Think the site has some opportunity.
Hey.
They have a plan like that in there. They had a plan like that in there, so.
Be fun to dust that off.
Are we done?
Yeah, we're done. Thank you. Yeah, we'd like to see this by next meeting.
Are we, before we go into exec session, I'd like to propose that we take. Uh, ten to fifteen minutes into our committee reports while we're in a.
Let's do it. I think it's a great idea.
We can move into exec session. I don't think exec session will take. More than fifteen twenty minutes. Uh, just a couple of real quick things from, uh, if I could do my report real quick.
Yeah, please.
To you, uh, we'll get out some additional um. Information for you, but just so you know that there will be on September fourteenth, a CMC ribbon cutting and tour.
Excellent.
For their uh, that new building addition they did. It's really cool in there. The simulated trainings and what they do is amazing.
Can we go to something at Robin's house? Yeah.
Uh, you'll you'll get invites on that and that'll be, that's. I think what two days, it's a Thursday after that, September twelfth council meeting. Um. So that's all I have.
Yeah, you really sold it like there was.
Well, I thought I had some high expectations.
Uh, we had MMC and it was in Frisco. And yeah, the burritos were okay. Right? They had good fruit. Um.
Mostly we talked about how preliminary housing needs assessment, which we sent to you. Uh, got a lot of good data. Obviously, we'll follow up.
The really important piece was they got some really good Hispanic outreach.
Yeah, I saw that.
Really good numbers in there that we haven't seen.
It was interesting. I it was good read.
Of stuff. It was really well done and she was outstanding in her presentation. Uh, open space. Uh, no meeting. Uh, you have one. Of weeks.
Tourism.
Yeah, we we had a meeting and um. You know, it's a chunk of it was about finances and I think BTO is coming in next meeting, so we'll. Go over all that then. Um, but you know, they're they're solid. We're in a good place. Jake can speak better through it. He's on the finance committee. Um, so, which is great. Um. The with with bookings. I think great to report, it seems, you you know, the booking window is getting shorter and shorter and shorter and shorter. You know, as we watched. You know, July have a have a shaky start, a bumpy start. It it ended up more than making up and and we ended up being up, but four or five points or or so with room nights, so. Um, July ended up being an okay month. August is starting out. Um. Behind, but you know, we we continue to make up ground there, so. Um. So you know, the data is. It it, you know, I I think the only predictable piece is that the booking window is getting shorter, so. So it makes it harder. Um. Ski Resort, um, you know, I think their projects up there are going well. Um, Sarah reported it. Do we get, is is Jody coming tonight?
Not for a while.
She she did report, which I thought was great. They're working with. Pepsi Coca-Cola, Pepsi. They're working with Pepsi on 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 a water, um. You know, on aluminum alternatives, you know, with plastic. So I. By it's great to hear finally somebody's working with the big Nashville guys to try to get them off square one, so.
You know, Aquafina comes in aluminum can.
Right. Exactly.
We sell it. I don't know why they can't.
I know.
Um, get it from Pepsi.
Um. Yeah, as we saw that that. Tamika Jones and me, I, you know, um. Uh, Lucy shared that at our last meeting. But um, yeah, good meeting. I think we're we're looking forward to having them. At uh, at our work session next week. Next couple of weeks, next meeting.
Sweet. History.
We have not had a meeting.
The uh rehabilitation of the Milne is. Looks fantastic.
We're gonna do a ribbon cutting tour. I think the second meeting in September we're planning for.
Looks great.
So we'll probably start that two o'clock before your council meetings.
Wait. Creative arts?
Yeah, BIFSA opens Friday. Go check it out. Um, and please reach out to Tamara with any feedback you hear from the community. Um, fall classes come out this week as well. Um, there should be a campus crawl on September first. To so you can go check out the studio spaces before the uh, the Watch House concerts. Check that out as well. The Riverwalk thirtieth anniversary was a big success, so thanks to everybody that came out. And then the finance.
I was so cold. I've never been that cold in my entire friggin' life ever.
How many times you go down?
Like ten at least. Couple of people just came over and kicked it, like Dennis Coon. He was on my, he made the list. Who made the list? He couldn't hit the thing, so he just walked over and kicked it.
And the finance committee met as well on. And then basically their ninety K had a budget compared to uh, what they were expecting. So that's some good news.
Excellent.
Hey, what's the deal with the um, Tenth Mountain uh, statue memorial? Is that? Is there a process of getting that?
You gave me an update on that, but you want to remind us? Pretty please.
Signage that's going in, Lee.
Thank you, Helen. Uh, this is Tamara from BCA. Uh, we have semi-permanent signage. That is going in in the next three weeks. It's in the process of being completed. Lee Gervin did a brief write-up. Um, as a temporary solution while we continue to work with the foundation and come up with a long-term interpretive plan since we. Have um. Realized that takes quite a bit of time with them, so uh, everything is is on track. That semi-permanent uh signage should last for up to two years. So it'll buy us some time as we look at. Blue River pathways and the Riverwalk and see where we go, since that's such a quintessentially um, Breckenridge. Uh, even though Tenth Mountain Division doesn't have a direct connection to Breckenridge. It's a beloved piece of the collection, so uh, that's where we are now and uh, you should see it up here soon, shortly.
All right. When you say foundation, you're talking about Tenth Mountain Division Foundation? Cool. I I don't know. In my heart, Tenth Mountain has a. Very close connection to Breckenridge. I mean, this is where they trained.
Yeah.
These mountains. So.
EML Advisory Board update. Okay, but you're on here now, so there you go.
Yeah.
Child care. Make anybody cry lately?
I'm sorry?
Make anybody cry lately?
We did have a great meeting though, um. Um, what was that, last Wednesday? Um, countywide assistance start, uh, the deadline for uh, applications is September first, which means that. Our uh, tuition assistance program ends August thirty first. Uh, they're 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 excited about getting with ECO and kind of comparing the data. And trying to see, you know, how they're faring versus how the BRECK program worked. Um, we got an update on capacity. Uh, Breck Montessori is at a hundred percent. Timberline's at ninety six percent, Little Red's at ninety four percent, Carriage House is at ninety percent. Um. Best news is that the staffing is at a hundred percent out of all these facilities. Uh, the only vacancies are at that pre-K level. Uh, so that's. You know, I think that that universal pre-K is increasing the supply. And so we're seeing some of that demand decrease. Um. The wait lists. Continue to show how unreliable they are. Uh, we have. People that are on the waitlist that have been offered spots for their children and declined them. We've had people on the waitlist that aren't pregnant. Um, and not expecting it all. Uh, they, the the waitlist.
How's that work?
You get on the waitlist, Jeffrey. Really? Um, just in case.
Oh, just in case Ellie lights some candles.
Or in case you meet somebody else.
Oh, that's good boy.
You do need. To be in.
Especially if you get off council, who's gonna watch you? So you know, and and so there is this, um. It's. Leg up who's who's managing this waitlist and. There's just a lot of work to be done to make it usable to. Uh, in order to use that data. To make a go-no-go decision on a new center. It is not there yet. Um, there are questions on there that have been asked by the centers and by us. Uh, to be placed on there that aren't mandatory, so they can skip it. Are you? Do you have a child planned? Or you know, that's, you don't have to answer. And so that's, um, you know, I guess the big thing is that it's it's still not a viable. Metric for deciding where we go at the moment. Uh, the other thing that's really kind of a big deal is our leadership changes. Uh. You know, we knew that Martha was retiring and she had a succession plan, but uh, Leslie from Timberline is uh, retiring as well. I think we said that last meeting. And uh, she is planning on leaving October first. The job was posted on. July thirty first internally and externally, and they're kind of working their, the boards working their way through candidates. But this is really is the first time we've seen any leadership change in executive directors in decades. Um, and then lastly, it's just. Memorializing the Breckenridge Tuition Assistance Program. That was such a big deal and how do we? Kind of summarize it and put that into a binder and put it on a shelf somewhere so that one day, if needed, we can go back to it. And so that's kind of what they're working through.
Excellent, yeah.
And I might add, uh, Carriage House fiftieth anniversary and Martha's retirement party is uh, August twenty fifth at the garden park.
That's crazy. Uh, social equity.
We have not met.
All right. Other matters. Usually good for one or two. Some speaking hour.
Forever hold your peace.
I uh, sometime I'd like to talk about golf.
I bet you would.
Yeah. I think there'll be an opportunity to address. There's a plan to address some of your concerns.
Okay.
Uh, actually, I do have. One or two quick ones.
Let's do it.
Um, so there's that Northwest COG thing about what happens when light tech expired, so. At some point, I'd just like to understand that within our properties, what that means. Um, and then, uh. When is the full housing needs? Release?
Uh, I don't know when they're gonna have the full housing needs assessment finished.
I think within the next thirty days.
Is that what, did she say thirty days? Yeah, will we get a presentation here? Yeah, it works.
Not at that level. It wasn't in the scope for them to go to every council. Meaning they present that information, but we can. I mean, we can try, we can. Sit down and have a discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to have a discussion about it.
Yeah, Lori can present.
Lori walks us through it.
Yeah.
And we protected our, so you know, we protected our pro- our light tech properties so that that's doesn't happen like in the Blue River. Because of the land. So.
Yeah. Other matter?
I just want to say I've had such great experiences at the post office recently. There's been a lot of super helpful employees there and.
There's two young guys.
I, one young guy, one middle-aged guy, and they've both been super pleasant and gone above and beyond.
Postmaster's done a great job with this, yeah.
The what, the way they did.
He really is, yeah.
And he's there all the time.
Yes.
He's always there.
Yeah.
If anything.
I'd like to jump on the love train real quick. I've had great um, experience with human resources lately.
With what?
Human resources. Yeah, at the town of Breck, our own human resource department, I I have.
Did they catch you stealing papers and getting yelled at?
Yeah, I have my own stool. When I'm term limited, I think we might have to move one one to another department because they'll have less work to do, but yeah. Appreciate it. Dana. Dana and her crew have been awesome, so it's nice.
Rankin, anything? All right, I got one thing. Where's Truckee? See here. There he is.
He just left.
I mean, so years ago, we made a huge think about. In the river by, between the Village and Main Street Station. There's those three. Bridge, there's a street, three historic bridge. Abutments and we made a big deal about. Those property owners taking care of those things. And I've brought this up one or two times in my sixteen years of sitting up here. They look like hell. One of them's falling apart. There's a ton of debris wrapped around them. And I know these things just get forgotten and it's not our. Problem, but it's a bummer because they were historic. They had to leave them at the time. I can't remember if they got points or not for. For putting them up. It was a long time ago, but they're falling apart. And it's a bummer because one of them's pretty much done and it's a, you know. I walked by there the other day and it really was, it's it's tragic that we're gonna. We're so. We are so conscious of the history of this town. And those things are just gonna be gone. And I know they're in some old pictures, so. If you can check on that and figure out what we can do to get them. Everybody know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right by you. I mean, it's right. Right when you walk into the bridge that joins the Village and Main Street Station. There's these three wooden presles from the old bridge that used to run there for the old. The old shops that were there back in the eighteen hundreds.
There. It's right in there. Right there.
It's, they're right like here, so anyway, you can. With that, I think we're moving on into a executive session.
Make a motion.
I moved at the town council going to executive session under CRS two four six four oh two four E. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations.
Oh, I love it.
Thinking strategies for negotiations. And or instructing negotiators concerning property the town may be interested in acquiring for open space. Purposes. There's a motion and a second. Mayor Mamula votes aye.
Who was the motion?
I made the motion and Rankin seconded. You wanna do roll call, Helen, or?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
M. Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman?
Yep. Yep.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Member Rankin? Presiding?
Yes.
Alright, it's August eighth, twenty twenty-three and the time is five forty-five PM.
Yeah, we gotta.
Helen needs to.
Okay, for the record, I'm the presiding officer. Mayor Mamula, as required by the open meetings law, this executive session is being electrified. Time is. The time is now six oh six PM. The executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were all of the town council, Rick Holman, Shannon Haynes, Anne Lowe, Scott Reed, Mark Truckee, Kirsten Crawford. Town council has discussed in executive session whether to direct the manager to negotiate the acquisition of property for open space purposes under certain parameters, which are confidential for purposes of negotiations. For sake of transparency, any final decision as to whether to enter into and execute a final agreement on the acquisition of property is the authority of the manager. Alright, we are adjourned until seven o'clock. I'm gonna call to order the meeting for August sixth, August eighth, twenty twenty-three. It's seven PM. Roll call, please.
Dick Carlton?
Here.
Jeffrey Bergeron? Carol Sade?
Here.
Jay Beckerman?
Present.
Todd Rankin?
Here.
Mayor Eric Mamula.
For July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Anybody have any, uh, thing to add? No, minute stand as presented. We have the approval of the agenda, Rick?
Changes.
Communications to council, public comment, these are non-agenda items, only three-minute time limit, please. Anybody in the audience wish to speak tonight? Alright. Public comment is closed. We have no second readings. We have first readings tonight, the first is council bill number twenty-eight, series twenty twenty-three. It's a bill for an ordinance amending the municipal code to display merchandise outdoors.
Good evening, mayor and council. The ordinance in front of you will amend the outdoor display merchandise section of the code. And we'll do a couple of things. One is allow for some exemptions from our normal requirements. It only allow one piece of outdoor merchandise to be displayed in front of a store. And those are for oversized outdoor equipment, uh, which includes bicycles, paddleboards, canoes and kayaks. There's a couple of other minor amendments related to the definition of bicycle. And an amendment that will allow the town manager to designate a third weekend of the year for outdoor sales days.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, a movie passed council bill number twenty-eight, series twenty twenty-three, the title which has been written to the record.
Second, there was a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman? Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Yes, councilmember Bergeron?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Uh, we have a second, uh, first reading of council bill number twenty-nine, series twenty twenty-three. Bill for an ordinance approving a lease with the Breckenridge Tourism Office, Inc.
Counsel, this will be first reading of an ordinance that had passed would allow the town manager, town manager to execute a five-year lease with the Breckenridge Tourism Office to lease office space in the professional building located at one thirty Ski Hill Road. We think it's a good move to get BTO into a town-owned space, uh, since, you know, it's kind of paying ourselves to do that. And so this is a great opportunity. It's a main level renovation has been completed of twenty-three hundred square feet over there.
Yeah, and that first floor location's great for BTO.
Yeah.
And there are storage of a lot of their event stuff.
Uh, any other questions of staff? Now, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, a movie passed council bill number twenty-nine, series twenty twenty-three, the title which has been written to the record.
And a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sade?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron?
Yes.
Beckerman?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Uh, planning commission decisions for the first of August, twenty twenty-three. Do we have any call-ups this evening? No, planning commission decisions stand as presented. Are there any other reports for the town manager and staff? Any other updates or reports from the mayor or council? Any other matters?
Uh, just one thing I want to thank James, he's not here, um, for kind of acting on some of these egregious, uh, weed situations that are going, spreading up around some of these newly built homes, especially on Wellington, so.
Thanks, Jeffrey. Anything else for the good of the order? Turned. Four minutes.